First, we have an ordinance to amend Section 2-6 of the City Charlottesville City Code, City Holidays, first of two readings.
Good evening, Mayor Walker and councilors. Before you tonight, at your June 3 meeting, Mayor Walker requested that we look at, that the council examine the idea of no longer observing April the 13th as a city holiday, and instead looking at possibly adding one or two additional holidays, marking March 3rd and March 4th. March 3rd would be known as Liberation and Freedom Day. Doing some research on this topic, to give the council some background, city holidays, 1933, I was looking through the old minute books in Ms. Thomas's office, and 1933, there were five city holidays that were talked about in a resolution by the city council at that time. April 13th at that time was not recognized as a city holiday. Fast forward to December 3rd, 1945, city council did pass a resolution establishing eight city holidays at that time. April 13th was observed as Thomas Jefferson's birthday as a holiday at that time. So this, this actually was, seems to be first observed by the city as a holiday 74 years ago. After that recognition via resolution, in 1971 is the first time the city actually listed its holidays in the city code, and that occurred January 4th of 1971. Terms of the change, I wanted to go over a couple of aspects of this. Mayor Walker's proposed that both March 3rd and March 4th be observed as city holidays. April 13th would no longer be observed as a city holiday. March 3rd would be known as Liberation and Freedom Day, and on that day is the day that the United States Army Forces came to Charlottesville under the command of General Sheridan, and at that time enslaved individuals, the emancipation process began. Concerning the logistics of this proposal, I know there's been a couple of questions about how this would work with weekends. The current city ordinance, which is in your packet at Section 2-6 of the city code, states, "Whenever any holidays fall on a Saturday, the preceding Friday shall be a legal holiday, and whenever the day shall fall on a Sunday, the Monday next following the day shall be a legal holiday." And so that would be, that would sort of be the explanation if you had, say, March 3rd as a Saturday and March 4th as a Sunday, then March 2nd would be observed as Liberation and Freedom Day, and March 5th would also be observed as a city holiday. I did need to add one line of text to the ordinance, and the last line that I added said, "When the 4th day of March occurs on a Saturday," so March 3rd would be on a Friday as Liberation and Freedom Day, March 4th would be on a Saturday. Now, currently, as the code is written, it doesn't really perceive that of March, if you're observing a holiday on that Friday, and then the other holiday falls on a Saturday. So the text now states that when the 4th day of March occurs on a Saturday, the 6th day of March, which would be that Monday, would be the second holiday. Those are the logistics of how this would work, and I also wanted to add that if you take a look at the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors website, their agendas are listed, and this Wednesday on their consent agenda is a proposal. Albemarle County also observes April 13th as a holiday, to observe Thomas Jefferson's birthday. The consent agenda on the Board of Supervisors website states that the proposal from the county executive is to no longer observe April 13th as a county holiday. Instead, it would be a floating holiday for county employees to use between January 1st and June 30th of each year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question of the distinction between a holiday that you take, have a day off for employees versus something just on the calendar. Is there a distinction there? So every, everyone that you're referencing, those five, and now these are all ones that are observed by, there's a day off, whether it's on a, you know, the actual day, or it's on a day that's nearest to that day?
Right.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bill, could you, so April 13 in the county is now a floating holiday?
Well, that's the proposal on their Wednesday Board of Supervisors consent agenda. Currently, it is a holiday, April 13th is a holiday, but the proposal is that it would no longer be observed and become a floating holiday.
But that means it's by choice of who?
The employee, between January 1st and June 30th.
And it's the county employee?
Yes, the county employee.
But this is an ordinance that pertains to a holiday for the whole city, correct?
Just our staff.
Well, this is, this would just apply to your staff.
But even the one that's before us tonight is just for our staff?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I'm, that's, that's something I didn't quite, I thought that was, and, and kind of a universal statement that that was the holiday for the city, but that is only for the city bureaucracy.
Well, that's, that's, it's what I would call a legal holiday, and if we want to go just briefly into that topic, the city code for city employees sets out these legal holidays. The state code has a separate provision, as you're aware, they set out the state legal holidays. Couple of differences in the city code and the state code is that the state code still observes what, what they call Lee Jackson Day and Columbus Day. The city does not observe either of those days. So if you go to a state court, which our courts are state, actually, our courts don't observe April 13th as a holiday in terms of they're closed. The courts are still open on April 13th even now, but they are closed on the Friday preceding Martin Luther King Day in January. So that's, you know, when we talk about holidays, these are legal holidays when government offices are closed. Now, obviously, there are other holidays that are not marked, that are, that may be designated, but are not, the business, businesses nor governments are closed. I'm thinking of something like Arbor Day, for instance. Earth Day, for instance, is a day that people celebrate as a holiday, but businesses or governments don't close that day.
That was my question earlier, I was trying to distinguish between, like, when we just recognize a day versus we actually give a day off. And I shared, I left an email with council last week that without getting input from staff, when the designated day was really troubling to me without getting that input from staff, but I actually liked the way the county's approach is to give flexibility to the employee, and also limits us on the number of days that we're tying up our entire city government from being closed to the public, so.
So, the reason for this proposal is clearly that to undo something that has been put in place, right? If we've been celebrating the April date, simply saying you can float, I don't see, I don't see that too many city employees, just like I'm sure, was there any notes on record that they selected the date versus?
No, but I did, and I think I did mention this, you know, our minutes, and actually, Ms. Thomas and I were talking about a different matter today, the old minutes were purely action minutes, so all it said was, this was the proposal, this was the vote. But I did go after seeing that, I, University of Virginia has their Virgo online service, and I went in, and the Daily Progress article about this from the city perspective stated that the city in December adopted that holiday schedule based on the county the preceding month had adopted the same schedule. So it was really the city at that time in 1945 was trying to link up with the county, but it didn't really have any information about April 13th.
Okay. So I asked staff and Ms. Green to give some ideas about what could replace the April holiday, and her reply was that, from the staff members that she spoke with, that it seemed that the Liberation and Freedom Day seemed the most ideal day to have either replace or an addition to the April, was her, I believe that was the exact wording of her response. Part of this work that we say that we're doing in the city requires that the message is clear, that it's not just about taking something or not ceasing to do something, it's about put, making a strong statement about why we're doing that. So when the city started recognizing, and this is on the Jefferson School website, it says Liberation and Freedom Day, which commemorates the beginning of emancipation for over 14,000 enslaved residents of Almarle County and the city of Charlottesville. The next paragraph says, "At the start of the Civil War, 52% of the residents of Charlottesville and Almarle County were enslaved, a historical fact that remained little known until 2016, work with the city's Blue Ribbon Commission on Race Memorials in Public Spaces." All the things we're talking about in the city in terms of equity, moving forward, this isn't the only possibility, but this, this sends a very strong message about our commitment to the work. So it's not just adding a day, a different day, floating a day, it's about being really strategic and sending a message about honoring individuals who have not been honored in, in the city.
And being intentional about it.
Yes.
I think, just to follow up on that, Mayor Walker, I mean, the original intent when we were writing up the thought, excuse me, writing up the resolution to celebrate Freedom and Liberation Day, Dr. Jelaine Schmidt, and I know we worked for a long time on the resolution, council members saw it, everyone was in support of it, and I don't think that there are any of my colleagues up here who are against the idea of Freedom and Liberation Day. So I hope that we can proceed forth in terms of making that something that is recognized holistically with days off and being very intentional about it from a city's perspective. In regards to Thomas Jefferson, there's a sign out in the crowd that I think is, in my opinion, poignant for today's discussion. Thomas Jefferson already has 365 holidays, and I do think that is the case here in Charlottesville. You can't go anywhere, you literally can't go anywhere within our city without hearing or seeing a reminder, quote unquote, of Thomas Jefferson. We received an email earlier today, or it might have been over this weekend, and I've really been thinking about it, because someone says, well, someone, I'm not going to say who it was, but the individual sent the email and essentially stated, "Well, we don't have to judge Mr. Jefferson by the bad things he did, and let's think about this holistically, and let's just bring about something else. We don't have, we need to look at bringing our community together and not devising us, dividing us anymore." But I wonder if that individual, or any of these individuals who firmly feel that way, they're not black, and when you think about specifically, specifically when you see an individual plastered across the city, who literally, Thomas Jefferson said that he didn't believe black people had the ability to emote. He also went on to state how foul we smelt. He went on to, as well documented, that he raped Sally Hemmings. There's no relationship that a slave owner can have with a slave.
Oh, Jesus.
So when we think about how we want to continue to commemorate this day on one side of our words, but then on the other side of our words, say how emphatically we want to discuss equity, those two things don't add up. You can't express to me that you want me to feel empowered, you want people to have their voice, you want people to feel as if they're included, and we want to have Unity Days, and we want to commemorate all of these other events, but then by the same token, say that we have pride in acknowledging an individual who firmly felt these things about people who look like me. I don't understand how we can continue to go down that path. And I'm going to be very frank, individuals will say, "Well, Wes, you said a lot of different things when you were young," and I hold no punches and take no quorns about it. But when I was 21, 22, 23, is a lot different from Thomas Jefferson being an old, wealthy, well-to-do individual who had already written the Declaration of Independence and accumulated all of this quote-unquote wealth, still saying these things and having these firm beliefs about different people, yet we still want to recognize, acknowledge, and dare I say, celebrate this birthday. I think it's time for us to put an end to it if we truly want to bring this community forward.
Mayor Walker, I'd like to make a statement, please. And Mr. Bell, Councilwoman Bellamy, you have laid out the horrific things that Thomas Jefferson has been responsible for, and others have said so as well. And it also is important to think about what Thomas Jefferson has done that relates to, particularly with his, the Religious Freedom Act. And I want to read something from that act, and it goes as this. "No man shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship place or ministry whatsoever, nor shall be enforced, restrained, molested, or burdened in his body or goods, nor shall otherwise suffer on account of his religious opinions or belief, but that all men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinion in matters of religion, and that the same shall in no wise diminish, enlarge, or affect their civil capacities." That was said at a time when Baptists, Presbyterians, anybody who wasn't of the Anglican Church were persecuted, that included Methodists. That is directly counter to what happened in 2015 in the state of Indiana under the governorship of Mike Pence, which then reinstated restrictions against religious liberty. So that, in that sense, Thomas Jefferson was ahead of his time, he was thinking about freedom of thought, and in fact, the Freedom of Religion Act is viewed as the, the settlement, the entitlement of the freedom of thought. And I find it somewhat ironic at this point in time that the very founding father that gave us the ability, through our laws, to give us the ability to question our holiday schedule, is now not going to be able to be at least acknowledged for that establishment of that act.
So, wait, please, no, can we, we're having a discussion up here, thank you. So, we're having a discussion.
Didn't you crouch your shoulders?
Wait.
Throwback.
Tanisha.
Oh, it's time for me to go home. Hey, you'll never get, that's why you lost in the primary.
So, I think, um... So, I can't even really get, I think what I'm trying to figure out how to say, um...
I think it's, I think it's, I mean, Ms. Council, Councilwoman, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
So, let's flip around to the side of the person at those 14,000 people who made up over 52% of the population at the time, let's talk about some of their thoughts about Thomas Jefferson. So let's talk about when you think about lynchings in this country, and you think about black men hanging from trees, castrated while rope is around their neck, oftentimes there are children and women watching them. Let's talk about black women hanging from trees, rope around their neck, babies in their bellies, bellies slit open, babies fall to the ground. Let's talk about some of that imagery that happened at the hands of white people in this country who had very barbaric practices. Let's talk about signage that said Negroes, horses, cattle, in auction blocks, okay? Let's talk about people who don't know, still to this day, but at that time, where their family's members ended up at. And let's talk about the founding fathers never thinking about black people when they were creating these laws, because it only applied to, as we know, primarily white male landowners, right? So I can't even understand how we're having a conversation about, at this point in time, still about what the perception of what he did well is. Even as we watched in this room today, we had white women and white men, even with an indigenous male in the room saying, reading a statement from a director of a center dedicated to Sacagawea, dedicated to truly honoring her, what our interpretation, just see it through our eyes, is what I'm hearing, just see what we see. Not ever really coming over to the other side and understanding, you should never have had the right to always form your interpretation and force everyone else to live by it. So it is insane that in this time, when we say that we're supposed to be doing equity work, after all the horrific things, and that you can still have individuals who every day don't know whether they can continue to exist or not, that we will have a conversation about, let's just look at what, what he did well. That's insane. It says, over, of the over 600 people Jefferson owed, he only formally freed seven of them. During his lifetime, Jefferson, this is Monticello's website, so if you have an issue with the facts, talk to them, and we would also like to point out that Montpelier started doing work with the descendants before Monticello did, and because they started... before Monticello did, and because they started telling truths that Monticello said, "Okay, this train is moving, let us begin." We cannot wait for people to dream up a different world and allow you to tell us what you should see. What if I said, and I know this is probably as inappropriate as they come, but what if I said, "Oh, let's have a Net Turner Day." Do you want to see through my perspective? What, you don't want to see that through my perspective, right? Not at all.
That's not what I said, Mayor Walker. I said that...
I'm not just saying you, I'm just saying anyone. If you start talking about a situation where the guy came up here and read, "What happened to a white woman on this day?" Right? We're not even here focusing on the troops. We're focusing on those 14,000 people who were enslaved. Those 14,000 people who had their first glimpse of freedom in that moment when they were told, "Okay, now, you are free." How does someone even have a right to own someone, right? But again, we're supposed to allow, and whether it's this day or not, it just speaks volumes to whether we can truly do this equity work, which I think we're spinning our wheels in a lot of ways. And for a primarily white-controlled area, Charlottesville and Almar County, we are still given permission for what you all will allow us to recognize, honor, and say is true. And that should be unacceptable.
And as I mentioned earlier, I'm looking at this more from, just in terms of just the logistics of changing the holidays is all I'm asking for, is for us, I mean, this just came up in our last meeting. I don't feel like we've gotten a chance for staff to weigh in on how they see us playing out. Also, until later in the review process, didn't realize that we were talking about two days versus one. So we're talking about adding another holiday. So there's two days that we were talking about recognizing in March in place of a day in April. And I just, and I've said, I said this in my email last week, and I was very clear about it, I just feel that we need to get input from staff on, are there considerations they want us to have? Because that's the precedent. When we've done other, when the past councils have had other opportunities to look at these dates, staff has had a chance to weigh in. And I have personally heard from staff that that is something that they would, they would like an opportunity to weigh in.
I've also heard from staff that they want the days to proceed forth. And it's like we do this all of the time.
But can I say?
So we're going to do it without any engagement of staff.
No, what do you mean? You said that you've spoken with staff. Mackay said...
I'm just saying, all I'm asking is to give him a chance to, I was talking...
But, so what I'm asking is, if you're talking about a March holiday, it's a month before the current holiday, right? You, I spoke with the city manager about the additional day, if that was something that would be, you're saying that staff is going to complain about having an extra day off a year?
I'm asking that from a, from a cost standpoint, first of all, and also just from a logistics standpoint, when are these days going to fall? And can we let staff weigh in on if it falls? Can we say, can they be observed in a time that would have brought up with a weekend? That's just some of the feedback that's come through. And I don't want to speak on behalf, I mean, I've only, I mean, I haven't done this full-on, like outreach to all of staff. I just don't understand why we have to make this decision tonight and not give staff a chance to weigh in on what their calendar schedule looks like. It's less, I, I real, I hear the points about the days and the recognition, I'm talking more logistically about what we're going to do in terms of the days off and how that's going to be handled.
So without looking at what Mr. Blair has put in the, in here about the, if the Saturday is the third, then it'll be a Friday. I know in a three-year cycle, there would have, in a five-year cycle, there would have been three weekend holidays. So I'm sure that doesn't change that significantly. So it would only be twice in five years where it would be a Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, based on. The other time, staff would have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, in this scenario. I don't know what it looked, you know, like with that. I'll also say that based on the equity work that the interim city manager did for nine months, that if you're talking about being intentional about what you changed this day to, we do not have the staff capacity to be intentional about this day and about why we change it, based on the narratives that we did not see. So essentially, you're, where I am proposing that we are intentional about when we take this day away, that when someone goes through the archives in 100 years, they can read that the city of Charlottesville stopped celebrating the birthday of the person that is celebrated in April, and they started celebrating the day that 14,000 enslaved people were freed.
And celebrating them, not, not just from the way in which, like, I think we've taken steps in first commemorating the day, which we did a couple of years ago. Last year, we did the whole thing with the soil, the pilgrimage, and so forth, and we've made efforts. But this is the next step in terms of us being intentional. And I, like, everyone up here likes to talk about healing. That seems like it's the buzzword throughout our community in our city. Let's heal, let's work towards unity, let's work in together. But how can we heal or even have any unity if we can't even, we as the elected officials make a decision about a day in providing our staff with a three-day holiday, which I don't see how any of them are going to turn down, and then furthermore, to the point, a two-day holiday, excuse me, that I don't think any of them are going to turn down. And then we are placing the fact that, okay, we may have to have an inconvenience, quote unquote, as I'm hearing it, from City Hall being shut down, but black folk in this community as a whole have been inconvenienced literally their whole lives. So we're going to be intentional, we're requesting that we be intentional in regards to how we address this situation, to bring about unity, to bring about healing. And it seems of just, seems as if to me, whenever we have these very difficult situations and topics revolving around race, we want to study it, we want to have another commission, we want to prolong it, and then do all of these drawn-out things, opposed to us, the elected officials, making a decision.
I'm not comfortable making a decision on something that I'm not even the recipient. I'm not an employee of the city in that way, and I just, I just don't understand why we can't at least get, like, we have in prior situations like this, feedback from staff on if there's preferences around how we, I mean, modify that, whether it's a moving this day towards an observance on a Monday, like we do for many holidays. You observe them on that Monday regardless of the date where it is. I just, I don't understand why we just can't get that feedback. It can happen in a pretty short period of time. I'm trying to understand what...
Because sometimes leaders have to lead, and we have to just make decisions.
Madam Mayor, I was hoping to ask you and Dr. Bellamy a question just about how you would, I'm very, your opinion on a, on one, on just a, just a question. So you referenced both Montpelier and Monticello, which have done very dramatic work. At Montpelier, they converted the whole bottom floor to a testimonial to the role of race and slavery in the Constitution, Madison's deep sins in this regard. And at Monticello, they've, you know, at first reluctance, and then, and then much more proactively upended a lot of the whole narrative there around, around Jefferson's role with race. And the Hemmings family, which was previously hidden, and it, and it really has totally changed, I think, the way that people, the way that they were presenting Jefferson. And, and then at the African-American Heritage Museum in Washington, they made a decision under Lonnie Bunch, who's now going to be the head of the whole Smithsonian. They do have a statue there of Jefferson, but he is over-towered by sculptural elements that, that represent all the slaves that, all the enslaved people that he unfortunately owned. And they're, they're taller than him. That's one of the ways that they've dealt with this, is they have, they have these statues, you know, I think it's bricks that are meant to represent the humans. And I'm just suggesting those, I'm curious, I really would like to know. So one of the, a possible way that this could happen, I remember a couple of years ago when Dr. Bellamy had, when we were first, before the injunction, I think with the parks, there was going to be a plaque series, and I think, I may, Professor Schmidt may have been involved in helping draft this language. It was very bold, re, language about the facts around the, around what gave rise to the statues in the Jim Crow era, and it was incredibly strong. And I wonder if the city, if, if the, if the holiday still did stay, setting aside the issue of creating a new holiday, which sounds like a great idea, but, and the city spoke with a voice like they did at Montpelier and at Monticello about the truth of everything with Jefferson, all these truths, you're saying, in the city's voice. And so it forced people to deal with and to acknowledge these facts, and it was an occasion for dealing with this history, and the city told the facts about Jefferson, but it, it, it might be a way of doing what they did with these other ways. Nobody is proposing at Montpelier that they just raise the mansion to the ground. Or, I mean, some people have proposed that at UVA, which is a public institution, that they would just, you know, tear down the statues, but, to Jefferson, but if you tell the, the truth, it's, I'm curious about how you all hear, hear that idea. And it may be that it's not a good, that it doesn't even, and I'm just, I'm really curious. If it followed the model, there's three other models, and the city told all of the worst facts in our voice with historians, with, with the voices of leaders here, and, and the public, anytime that they would come upon this day, would get the, the truth.
So I think that that's still about appeasement. I think that in a location, like even when we're talking about the statue, you put the statue in a museum, and you can contextualize it, and people who want to go to that museum and see those statues, then they can do that. We're talking about the power of these individuals, and so there's no way that someone was going, Monticello wasn't going anywhere. The only thing that you can do if you're going to, if it's going to stay, which we know it is, UVA is going to stay, is if you start doing this work, is how do we acknowledge the other story? Right? That is what they're saying, as if that really provides any, you know, true healing. It's, I, I think it's, it's just, we are in a society where white people control almost everything, and it, we'll start telling the truth, but we're going to keep our truth. If you need this, your version of the truth on the left side, our version is still going to stay on the right. I don't think that's the same thing as making, making this kind of statement. I just don't think it is.
Mayor Walker, may I ask you something?
Well, may I answer the question? I think, for me, Councilor Signer, I enjoy seeing other people's perspectives in terms of like how they address different situations. I think there is value in that. But I think there's also value in us being a leader in regards to how we address this issue in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So specifically for us, I think not to make a headline or not to get people, quote unquote, riled up or be divisive, but I think in terms of us doing what is right and taking a bold step in saying, "This is how we are going to address the situation." It's imperative for us to come up with our own solution, and us taking the stance in which we will declare, we were the first city in the state to celebrate Freedom and Liberation Day. I think this will also be very important and send a clear message. In light of everything that's transpired here, when people talk about what steps we're going to take moving forward or what's transpired, we have been very intentional in regards to addressing equity, healing, and in bringing about unity, and telling full stories specifically of people whose stories haven't been told. This allows us to do such. Some people will say that it's symbolic, but I think these kind of symbolic measures, they matter a great deal when you're sending a symbol or sending a message to a community.
So Mayor Walker, may I finish what I was trying to say? That this was, and, and Councilor Bellamy just mentioned the phrase, "The full story." A proposal that I would like to make is that there, there would be the, we would make Liberation Day, the Observance Liberation Day, a legal holiday in Charlottesville. That is, make that a given, codify that in our law. Doing away with Thomas Jefferson's birthday doesn't do away with the history. It, that day, that birthday is still here. What he has done in the past is there. And, and to play off of what Councilor Signer said, that is the day to tell the full story, the good and the bad. But it is, it is the American story, it is the full picture of this country. So, so this is, this is a sort of balancing, because it's a rebalancing...
Kathy, there's no balance.
But it's, to wipe away things, to not tell that story means that you're, you're not telling the full story of the United States. So, so yes, add, add the, add the Liberation Day, and make that the paid holiday.
I got you.
But, but to, to say that April 13 doesn't exist, that Thomas Jefferson was never born is, is, is not real.
Okay, so, so before 1945, did, between his birth and 1945, did anyone forget about Thomas Jefferson?
So I wasn't, I, I don't know. I, I do know that there, in 1945, I wonder why that was brought about. I just don't know.
There's, there's, when we have these discussions, there is literally no way in this city in which you will not be able to acknowledge or forget about Thomas Jefferson. But that doesn't mean that we, as a city, have to celebrate, commemorate, or acknowledge him with a day. You will not, this is similar, and I'm going to, this is a parallel, and in my opinion, I think it's one that's very easy and plausible to make. It's similar to the message that people say when they talk about the Confederacy. If we remove these statues, or if we stop doing X, Y, and Z, we're going to erase history, or people will no longer know what's going to happen or transpire. We live in Virginia, which literally 70 miles away was the capital of the Confederacy. There is no way in which people are going to forget about individuals being raped, individuals being enslaved and in bondage. There's no way in which we're going to forget how things were in the good old days when Dixie ran wild. We won't forget that. The same way we're not, the, the University of Virginia is literally five miles away. There's no way we're going to forget Thomas Jefferson's birthday, or the city is no longer going to be able to recognize or know when that day was. But there is value and power in us being intentional when we're hearing from community members. We heard this from the Blue Room Commission, and we're being very clear that we want to do something that's going to show that we have your back. Again, some will say it's symbolic, but this are truly, these are truly the kind of steps that we have to take if we want to bring about healing, quote unquote. Healing isn't always easy, and sometimes we want to take these easy positions in which we appease both sides, but at some point, we're going to have to decide whether or not we're going to do what's right, or we're going to do what's going to make the majority feel good. And they've been able to feel good for a very long time. And I think there's also a lot of the majority, specifically white people, who also want to see this day go away. We have the opportunity, let's do it.
And I'll just say, my, my focus is not about the April 13th day, as it is about understanding what are we, what decisions are we making about the time that staff will get off outside of, like, on, on this other day, in the March day? Or is there, I'm, Dr. Richardson, I'm just, I'm curious, because what's been proposed is two days off. And, I mean, I just, what are your thoughts on getting, engaging staff in this decision-making?
Either way, it's the council's decision in terms of what you want to make, in terms of making it a holiday, floating holiday, or whatsoever. You know, that's at your discretion. Either way, we, either we're off or we're going to work. So, I mean, it's up to the council, that's your decision.
I agree, like, it's up to us. And I think when we do things, like, let's send it back to hear what staff is going to say, it essentially just prolong, it kicks the can down the road. We have to stop doing that. Like, we are the electors, let's make a decision.
There's this precedent that when this has been discussed before, that staff has had, this is not a big deliberation, it's just, can we send a survey out and get...
So, hold on, hold on, let her, let, let's, let's let, let's let Ms. Hill, let's let Ms. Hill, let's let Ms. Hill, please. Vice Mayor, excuse me.
I, I just have a hard time when those of us who aren't employees of the city are going to dictate when those days are off. If we could just get input from those folks, and there's precedent for doing that, and if there's not an, an interest among council to do that, that's, so be it. I'm just, that's my position. I just would like to take an opportunity to have staff weigh in on this decision.
So you think that... So you think that they want to always have a Friday? So we can write in here, can we not, that it would be a Friday, Monday holiday?
Right, I'm also hesitant about the two days. I'm trying to understand where that's coming from.
Okay. So, when I talked to Dr. Richardson about this, I mean, I think we have 11 holidays now. This was also me attempting to, I think it's in, it gives this, it makes this holiday significant, I think, by people, you know, maybe, you know, thinking about it. We originally had like Liberation and Freedom two days, but I told Mr. Blair that it's one day, and so it just, we will write it as the day after. But I also think with the 11 holidays, that if I talk to Dr. Richardson about, you know, having 14 holidays a year, and how could we, you know, make that happen, which is just something that I have, you know, tabled, just for staff, in terms of how do we care for our staff? So I don't think that, what was the price tag on this extra day, 65?
It was $62,000.
$62,000.
$62,000.
And I just think the extra day for me, I, I'd just like you to give staff flexibility.
Madam Mayor, I just wanna, so I've been listening very carefully to this, and I didn't know, I wanted to hear the answer to that question. And I'm, I'm looking through the list of holidays right now. It goes New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Thomas Jefferson Birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Thanksgiving Holiday, Christmas. And I, I've been wrestling with it. I, I remember when I read, Henry Wiencheck wrote a book called Master of the Mountain, where they did an excerpt in the Smithsonian Magazine, and it was about how Jefferson calculated the labor of the, of the children that he owned. And it was this very brutal, horrifying expose that was in, that was, that was written down. And he really was like an accountant of the, of the, of the utility of these kids that were working in the nail factories. And I do, I have been frustrated for a long time at this kind of mystique that Jefferson wove. And, and I, I do think it's, it is odd that we single him out, out of the three other president, four, with, with a nexus to this area. And, and I do think that I, and I, I can, and I hear the passion and the pain that, that, and I've, and I've generally had a lot of misgivings about, as Dr. Bellamy, having gone, we've gone through wars on this, about symbolic actions. But I think right now, I think that I would support the move to, to remove his, the holiday. Because, and I do think that it would be, I do think that it would send a message, and I know that Democratic, Democratic committees around the, around the country have changed their Jefferson Jackson Day dinners, and he will still be, and I, and I would like there to be some recognition of, of the story, that, that, I don't know. It, it probably doesn't matter. I'm just thinking about the...
No, I just didn't hear what you, I didn't hear what you, did you say the story?
Yeah, to, to explain, because sometimes we, we forget the history of, of how changes happen. And, and the narrative that would, to go into the new holiday, if it would explain.
Oh, that makes sense.
But, but I, and I've, I hear, I hear where you all are coming from.
And I'm hearing that too, and all I'm just saying is, as we look at the date that it becomes, I'm just trying to understand how are we marrying up with those dates? And is it two dates or one? So you're in support of two dates, Mike?
I would rather we ha, I, I would rather we just have, I, I know that, that the individual date is very important, but I think it would make more sense to have it be the third Monday of, of the month than it would be, I know that it wouldn't correlate to it, but it looks to me like the liberation period was a period of days. So if it was one, it seems, it seems a lot to create a full weekend of a holiday, but I, that's just, it seems like we should have one day. That, that would be my instinct, is that we create a new holiday, and, and it just would be a one-day holiday, and it would be the, whatever the Monday or, or Friday of the month was, and not have to be a, a three-day or four-day weekend. That, that would be my...
Well, it was just offering the third and fourth as holidays for city staff, and however that fell, is what, but when Counselor Hill sent her email, she said that her concern was staff having the long weekends.
I don't think they want, I mean, just a Wednesday in the middle of the week, which is kind of what happens with the current, April 13th, it just kind of falls where it does. I was just trying to have some consistency, people can rely on that and have it be a long weekend. And I'm not, I, that's why I think we need to get input from staff, but there doesn't seem to be any energy for that, so that's fine. I, I just, I'm fine with moving, providing the day in, in this timeframe, being a single day. My preference would be that it's on a more of a set schedule.
So you all are opposed to offering an extra day for staff to be off? Even though...
I'd rather have them have a floating, have some flexibility with that second day, than having four days in March.
They wouldn't have four days, and March is two.
So, with a weekend, if it's with it.
I'm confused. It would just be one, I've got, I've lost...
So it would be March 3rd and 4th.
March 3rd.
What...
If it fell on a weekend.
Counselor Hill said she was concerned about was them not being able to have long weekends.
Why can't it just be one, a one-day holiday?
It could, but I was, that was another attempt to give, we have 11 holidays right now, and so it was also, I thought...
I think it should be a one-day holiday. That's just my, can't change the Jefferson holiday and have it be a new, a new one-day holiday? That, that would be my, and, and have it fall on a Monday instead of Wednesday, so then it's a three-day weekend, and people can really do something meaningful with it.
So I need a clarification on what you just said. You said one Jefferson holiday, or is it Liberation Day?
Liberation Day.
Liberation Day.
Okay, so, so if I, I just want to clarify this, that there is no interest at all in having Liberation Day as, as March 3rd as the holiday? And then also retaining the April 15th as a day to, to really tell the full, whole story of Thomas Jefferson? There is actually no interest in that.
But would you support March 3rd and 4th?
I would support March 3rd. I don't, I don't understand.
But you just were okay with having a March and April day, so would you support two days in March?
I, I'd, a day in, I just said April 13 and March 3rd. So I don't see, I don't see why we need two days in March.
But I think we have the support to do away with April, so would you support two days in March?
Well, you don't have support for two days in March.
I'm asking you...
No, I, I don't. I mean, I, I think it's one day in March.
But you just said April and May, which would have...
One, one would be a paid holiday, one's not.
So, but you're still in support of two days?
But one, I thought is the issue, both being paid or not, one...
No, Dr. Richardson didn't say that was an issue. Well, let me...
Yeah, I'm confused about that one then, because I thought, I thought going to two days was an issue.
That's a cost.
About cost.
It's $62,000 for each day that we're off. So if we get one day, that's a number. We get two days, that's double that number. So either way the council wants to go, we'll go in that direction.
So I would propose that March 3rd is the paid holiday, but that April 13 is not the paid holiday, but it is still a holiday on the books, that people can choose to, that we can acknowledge.
No.
Okay, and then I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. So Madam Mayor, my, my suggestion would be, we, I mean, it sends a clearer message if we are changing, that, that the new holiday becomes March 3rd, but, but my, my, for some of the reasons, I, I would change it to be a Monday or a Friday so that people could take a three-day weekend. And, and somehow, however we explain that, because it's a range of days that were the unity period, and then it doesn't have a budgetary impact, so we kind of, if it's one-to-one, but the message is super clear. And then we allow staff to get a full, a three-day weekend, and we have changed, we have stopped this one, we have created a new one. Sends that message, no budgetary impact, and allows people to get a three-day.
So I have a, a question. I hear you. I just have a, a question. If April 13 falls on a Wednesday now, or if it falls on a Tuesday, does the city all still close, or do we only celebrate it on Friday and Mondays?
It closes during the week, on a Tuesday or Wednesday.
No matter what day.
No matter what day the 13th falls on.
So that's the parallel that I'm looking at, sorry.
So that's something else we'd fix.
Yeah, so if it, like, if March 3rd falls on a Wednesday, to me, I don't think it matters, because we're, we need to show the significance of that March 3rd and March 4th. It seems as if you're not...
If, if that's the preference, I, I, I don't feel strongly about it. I'm trying to think of a way for...
No, I mean, I'm talking, I am talking about two days, so March 3rd and March 4th. You feel strong in regards to it should just be one?
It, it feels, it, yeah, it feels more, it feels more symmetrical, and it feels like it's, 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 it's...
You're saying like, take one and create another one?
And then, and then we, and then we get to tell people, it's not a, there's no budgetary impact, but we did a very meaningful, sent a message, and if you were to change it so that people could take a three-day weekend, it's, it's really helpful to staff. But we, we haven't had a lot of staff feedback on it. That, that would require changing, but you're right, you would lose the, the planting a flag in the middle of the week, this is the day that we're...
Right.
And especially you do that with two days, but I'm just saying that if you...
That's why I think the power is, and that's being specific in regards to, it is this day.
Maybe.
And the other thing that I would like to say is later, we're gonna have a conversation about, and we know how much money that we waste, 60, and again, I was just attempting to, one, this seemed like the time we could also make a statement about this day, but also maybe inch towards this 14 paid holidays a year, and maybe not. But I feel strongly about the day. I do think that we could, you know, say to staff too, we appreciate the work you do the other days minus the 11 that you're currently off, and figure that out. But if that is not, I don't want to get hung up there, because the, the most important part of this was undoing the, the April date.
Okay, so, I would...
Did you ask something?
No, I just, you know, for me, I, I, two extra days is great, but, but I also, as, as always, I always think about the folks who work at the recreation centers and other places, who are part-time employees.
Oh, you think about us now?
I always think about...
Just wanna. Okay. All right.
I don't.
So then, I would like to make a suggestion of sorts then, or, I don't know if we're making a motion.
Mayor, Mayor Walker, may I just make a request, if I may? I support creating the Liberation Day holiday, and that's March 3rd. I would like to be able to go on record to support that, if that could be something that could break the vote up instead of one that, that discontinued the April 13. I don't need April 13 to be the paid holiday, but I do think we need an acknowledgement of that day. That, and, and that president was, was of this area, and that president started University of Virginia, the, the first university in the country that wasn't a seminary. Again, it was about freedom of thought. Again, that is the, that would, that is what, so I, I do, can I, I just want to ask this council if it would, and, I'll create a scenario where we could vote for each date separately, that the March 3rd would be the paid holiday. I would, I would very much like to vote for that. I, I have trouble just completely erasing April 13 as a day that this community doesn't acknowledge.
Well, I think, you know, I do think it's, I think it's important for the, for the record and for history to show clearly how we each voted. So I have no issues, if a motion is needed, Mr. Blair?
Well, let's, let's go through, this is procedural, so if that's, if that's what you're talking about, we can either have this as an action item on the next agenda, or we could have adding March the 3rd as a holiday as, like, item C on the consent agenda, and deleting April 13th as a separate item on the consent agenda. So that would, in fact...
Yeah, make it two votes. That's literally what I was going to propose, that we have two votes, or, sorry, do, do I need to make a motion, or do we need to make a motion for sort?
Well, I guess the first question would be, do you all want to see that on the consent agenda, or do you want it as an action item at your next?
No, I like it as an action item, so it can be clearly stated how we voted.
Okay. I can, I can do a council memo with both of those.
Okay. So one specifically in regards to getting rid, or, excuse me, no longer celebrating Thomas Jefferson's birthday of April 13th, and then the other for us clearly recognizing as a city, it's a paid holiday for March 3rd for Freedom and Liberation Day?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're gonna defer this to the next...
It's not, it's a first reading, so...
Oh, okay. Dr. Richardson, I would be super curious if there was any way to advise us on whether staff would prefer for the March 3rd to be recognized on a Monday or a Friday, just for convenience, or whether there's more significance in Dr. Bellamy's argument that it is planted. I just, if there's a way of informally testing, we're, we're gonna do it, it's, but, but I'm just, it, I think this is what we're talking about with getting staff feedback, because it's, like, I'm thinking about the way that you plan out and take advantage of a day off.
We could do a survey.
And the reason of a day off is, yeah, I think that would be great.
We could do a survey, but you're saying that you're still gonna adopt it anyway.
Right, so there, there will be a day, it just is whether it, it could fall on any day of the week, whether it would be intentionally scheduled to go up against a weekend. I just would really like to know staff's feedback on that.
We can do that.
But Dr. Bellamy, is that okay?
Well, I mean, I think it's fine to do the survey. My position is still, regardless of the date that it falls on, that's the day in which we need to celebrate.
I would like to have staff's input to help guide my decision on the 3rd versus the other. But I said that from the beginning, so...
And Mayor Walker, with regards to Mr. Blair, I'd like one more point of clarification. In a way, what, I just want to make sure that the March 3rd is the one that's the paid holiday, April 3rd, even as the consent agenda, is the one that's not the paid holiday.
No, that's something different.
Right. We're no longer celebrating April 13th, it's no longer being recognized, it's no longer...
Okay, so there's not gonna be an option to, to propose that other one?
Well, let's see, in terms of April 13th, are you asking that, in effect, it would be an unofficial holiday? Is that what you're asking?
Well, it's essentially swapping out what, the way we're currently treating Liberation Day. We're gonna be just making April 13 like the...
But Kathy, that defeats the purpose.
There's no, and I don't think you have support for that.
I'm just asking, is that...
Well, here's what I would offer on that to you, if, if that is your interest. I will compose the council memo and the ordinance to reflect that March 3rd will be an official city holiday, April 13th will no longer be a city holiday. You're letting your, and...
Is that not it? Like, if Kathy is interested in this, she needs to talk to you and draft her own?
Right, and I was going to suggest, if you have an interest, since it wouldn't go in the city code, just like Liberation and Freedom Day currently, that was through a resolution, you would need to draft a resolution, you could talk to me about that, and that could be on a future council agenda.
Thank you.
Is that...
That's, that's good.
All right. So are there any other questions?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, so Ms. Galvin, you're gonna have that resolution on your own?
She can do that anytime.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just being clear.
You can do that anytime.
Yeah, I'm just being clear, because...
And I, and I'm...
You're just gonna bring that forth on your own? Got you.
Right, so, but I'm, I'm, it's very clear to me now what we're talking about, and, and I, I, we have more things, I have more things to think about.
Okay. So just for the sake of this conversation, we all know, pointing again, next meeting, March 3rd official holiday in which we're celebrating, we're voting on that next month, I mean, excuse me, the next meeting, and then in addition to that, April 13th, Thomas Jefferson's birthday, no longer celebrating or recognizing, it's done with.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues.
I need, I do need a break.
No, no, no. I have babysitter on the clock.
Let's go.
Now, I was just saying it, but if I did need a break, we could take a break. So next, we have the disposition of the Lewis and Clark and Sa, Saugawea statue, and, and there is a vote for this one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. What you have before you, it's a recommendation from staff at the request of the City Council regarding a... at the request of the City Council regarding a disposition of Lewis Clark and Sacagawea statue, located at the, uh, the corner of West Main and Ridge, McIntyre intersection. The City Council approved on May sixth, two thousand and nineteen, a resolution accepting staff's recommendation. Additionally, the Council also directed staff, uh, to design a public process for addressing the disposition of Lewis Clark and Sacagawea statue to be considered for implementation, separate from the state-funded components of the West Main Street scape plan. Following staff discussions, there are several staff involved in this discussion, including NDS planners, um, historic preservation planner, the Director of, uh, Human Rights Commission, Charlene Queen. We discuss, uh, uh, various aspects of this recommendation, and then, um, regarding a, a creation of a process, a public process to drive the disposition of the statue. What staff is recommending is for council to consider setting up a eleven-member committee to oversee the public process. Staff is also recommending that the following composition, the, uh, the committee be composed of six at-large members and one representative from each of the following boards and commissions. The Board of Architectural Review, the Historic Resources, Resources Commission, the Human Rights Commission, the Place Design Task Force, and then the eleventh designated member would be a city staff, probably, uh, from NDS or another, uh, city department, who will assist in the coordination of the consultant, uh, activities. Staff also is proposing, uh, that council allocates seventy-five thousand dollars to support the activities of the committee. Now, uh, it doesn't mean that the process will consume all the, um, seventy-five thousand dollars. Whatever is left will be returned to the general fund and, uh, for reallocation to other, uh, projects. There is a resolution attached for the, uh, council consideration, which outlines, uh, uh, the number of months the committee will deliberate and responsibilities for the committee in terms of driving the public process. There are a couple of things staff wishes to, uh, point out to the City Council. Just in case, at the end of the day, the council decides, perhaps at the recommendation of the committee, to move the statue from its present location to a different location, other than twenty feet from the current location. If that becomes the decision, then it has to go to the B R, Board of Architectural Review. If Board of Architectural Review denies or approves that request, it could be appealed to the City Council, and if council decide to reaffirm, uh, Board of Architectural Review's recommendations, somebody can also, uh, decide to take, uh, the City Council, uh, to the circuit court. So that would be where, uh, people can appeal the decision of the City Council. So council needs to keep that in mind. With that, I will entertain any question from the City Council regarding the attached resolution.
Yes, Mr. Kepner, like, so, again, how did you come up with the seventy-five thousand dollars? And then, secondly, um, there's, in the committee, there's no refer- reference to members of the, of the Native American tribes. Why, why aren't they included in the-
There are eleven, eleven, um, uh, there are eleven, uh, people that are being proposed to serve on this committee. We decided to, um, ask for representatives from, um, from city boards and commission. There's, with that six, there are still, uh, about four, four, uh, appointments to be made, and those could be for Native Americans to serve on the committee. Regarding the seventy-five thousand dollars, staff thought that in terms of hiring a consultant or a facilitator, if you will, that could be somebody from, um, University of Virginia or some other facilitator, and then, uh, meeting expenses for the, uh, committee. So it might be less than seventy-five thousand dollars, but staff felt that seventy-five thousand dollars would be appropriate for the process.
Thank you. Um, and it, uh, but it was, and none of this was part of the original scope of work?
Because the, what council approved as part of the schematic design was to shift the statue twenty feet away from the current location. But the, the public-driven process was not part of, um, uh, the street scape design. However, at the last, uh, uh, at the meeting, where council directed, directed staff to, uh, to create or recommend a public process, that was the point at which the decision was made, that there will be a public process to decide the fate of the statue.
Thank you.
So, um, I think if we create another, uh, it just, it's insane to me that we need to create another commission, to, to continue to do, to, to do this work. Mr. Willer, can you pull an image up here? The, um, the dignity statue, do you know that one in, um, South Dakota?
But if you Google it, it might pop.
Because I think what we, when we're talking about, um, the intention, you know, the emails that have come through have talked about what the, um, again, we have the same individual who commissioned the Lee statue, commissioned the statue, and, um, this is different. This is clear, there's no question, you don't have to put signage, you see the grace, dignity, humanity, um, and you understand, um, whoever did this, they truly understood. People who went on the pilgrimage with us, when you saw those sculpture, um, you could see the pain, the hurt. You knew that the individual who created it understood what individuals had gone through. When we were in the slave dungeons, you could see the, um, heads that had been created to represent the individuals who died there, you could feel the energy. It is so important for you to understand, you know, for us to understand that just the intention, and we always talk about what was the intention, the fact that we should just be, um, proud that the sculptor, sculptor included Sacagawea, when it's clear that there wasn't really any honor, no matter what has been written. If you have to question when you see something, um, whether she's cowering or whether she's tracking, um, when you see, when you look at it and the primary thing you see is two white men, that is different from this. It's different. So I think when, again, when you're talking about doing, truly doing the work, if we're at a place where we're talking about moving something, and there's gonna be a cost to move it, and we're talking about something that really should stand in the center of our city, should it continue to be that, or should it be something like this?
And I just, we did have our email, and it was asked to be read, and so I do feel that we should, it was asked to be read on their behalf. Bunna greetings, my name is Roseanne Abrahamson, and Sacagawea is my great, great, great aunt. Years back, we, the people and familial descendants of Sacagawea came to Charlottesville for the statue's plaque dedication in the city center. I understand that it is to be removed from its standing spot for surrounding repair work. I believe it should be replaced back to the site once the repairs are made. I'm asserting this because a decade ago, we came across this country to bring together people and to commemorate our shared history. I can vouch that, at that time, Charlottesville's citizens came together harmoniously with celebration to pay homage to heroes of two different races. This statue stands for that unity, harmony, shared history and event. I also think that when the statue is replaced, it should be celebrated with the same thought-togetherness. I firmly believe this will, um, erase what the world witnessed in Charlottesville's recent events of disharmony and division. Do it for your citizens, for you, and to bring a positive face to your city. I hope that my words will be heard, thank you.
One, we were a different city ten years ago.
But I think we need to even point to the, um, that day, at that time, it was when I saw the statue, I was very sad. So initially, and I spoke to Dave Norris this morning about contextualizing the statue, putting up something different, them doing the smudging ceremony and bringing that energy in, that's still very different from having something of authentic representation. If they are thinking, I don't know what, because I haven't talked to them, but if the, um, thought process is that we are gonna remove the statue and not put anything back, that they won't have a say in creating something that truly honors, um, their history, then I would want to keep it too. Um, I think that conversation should be had with them, to understand, if you had a different option to create anything you wanted to sit in this space, would it be this, or could it be something else? If the city is saying that we will, um, rectify, I don't know what we're saying, but I think that it should come from them. We don't know what her thoughts were outside of that email, but the fact that when they came here, that was her first comment, I was sad until we had the ceremony, that's still different.
Madam Mayor.
And I will, just, um, real quick, I want to hear, um, from the family and from other, um, you know, indigenous peoples and from the area. And I think that's the only voices that we should be listening to.
Madam Mayor, just a, so what, what I've heard and what, and what you just were talking about was that, that making the decision with another decision kind of moved into it, which would be doing a whole new memorial along the lines of this incredible one. That is a very different, complicated, fraught one that does not have a good history in the city. Like, the, the sculpture that was gonna be at Vinegar Hill outside the Jefferson School was done several years ago, a very hard time raising money for it, very hard time giving money for it. We gave a little bit of money out of the equity fund, which is a big debate. We have had a very hard time coming up with names that would go toward individuals. It's, it is, it is really, it's, it's just, in terms of getting anything done in the next five or ten years, and that, that doesn't, I'm not meaning to be a kind of wet blanket about it, but it's just, it's very, very hard to do new statuary, especially with all the other statues that we still haven't been able to do, and if you look at that being a priority for city dollars as compared to, you know, the, the major school CIP issues that were, that are bearing down on us, and the major equity issues for real, you know, for, for living people, it's gonna be really hard to justify to the public to invest a million dollars or something like that and a whole two- or three-year period of community engagement, and hiring a sculptor, and doing RFPs, and it's just, and if that's what we're really talking about, is like, doing that, it, those, those two are combined, that we wouldn't make this decision because we're gonna engage the family on doing a new statue along the lines of this beautiful one, that, I, it's just hard for, I, I definitely think that would be something that the new council, there's three new members coming on the new council, that, that's a big, serious endeavor that you guys would have to, two of whom are here, but maybe, if, if they win in the general election, it's, it's just, it's a big, serious endeavor, and the Vinegar Hill experience has not been positive for it. And it means that, that you, in the next two years of, it will be a big priority in the next two years that you have to do is this one statue that you're working on. And I think that's why I would incline to just, I mean, this was very powerful for me to read. It's a direct descendant, and she was, I, I just Googled all the stuff that she was saying, and yes, I, but it's hard for me to substitute my judgment for, for hers, and Mayor Norris's email today was very thoughtful, and so I, you know.
And so was James.
Sure, of course, and I think there would be differing opinion on all this.
And I think if you, I wish Dave had come, because I called him after that to say, hey, just to clarify, are you saying that, um, the statue should definitely stay? Are you saying that, and I mean, I'm not gonna speak for, you know, him, but there was some clarity provided in that email about what happened in two thousand nine, and if they had been able, if they had been able to do more, then they would have.
I, I took his email, maybe we should read it, because it was, he's a former, I mean, he was the one who's, because I, I took it as saying, if it was properly removed in a way that people can actually see what is on it, and, and what's featured, and York is on it, and the way, because right now, I used to walk by it twice a day, because you don't see anything, because you're dodging-
That is one-
Cars, and it's a terrible location, it's that awful areas asphalt, and it's just terrible, you can't see it. You can't see the plaque, like, it's just-
And that's what I took away from, I talked to him this morning too, and that's what I took away, was just, what can we do to further make, you know, create a vision to, to see the things that we can't see right now? But in the new pocket park environment, there's a lot of opportunity there to do that, to do just that. But if you wanted to read the communication, that's fine.
But he also talked about the Lewis, um, the, the center.
But that's a University of Virginia piece. I, but I do think we still need to engage the Monakin Native American tribe, as well as the Shoshone. I, I do think we do need to reach out and have a conversation with, with the Native American peoples about this.
Right, but it's not gonna cost seventy-five thousand dollars to do that, right?
No, it's not, and I think seventy-five thousand dollars is way too expensive.
I don't think there's an energy in council for that.
This eleven-member committee is what-
I mean, there could be all kinds of, the, the-
Is, is the right approach.
The firm-
So could we pay, like, could we set a, kind of, like, a work session? See if we can invite, um, and pay for people to come here to, and set the intention around what this work session would be about? Tell them what we are kind of debating about here, and we listen to them that day? And make a decision after that point?
Could I suggest? If, so, so this firm that we have, doing the West Main Plan, has, I, I believe they have a committee, and they have somebody who's consulting with them on how to do historical elements and, uh, within the design of West Main Street, and if we just kind of, if the decision was just for design purposes, yeah, it's gonna move twenty feet, and, and that was the original plan, but there's a lot of, we know there's gonna be a park, there could be plaque, and it, there could be information, there could be all kinds of different ways of explaining to better than the one plaque right now, and a lot of community engagement went into that, that we would include as much as possible. We would kind of make the first decision, but we would do a whole element of community engagement, like you're saying, to include their feedback in other components of the park. Now that it was gonna, because the staff needs to have this decision. If this keeps on getting kicked six months or a year down the road, or more, then, then it'll, that kind of twists up the, the whole plan, but, but we could make the decision, which maybe there are the votes for-
Well, we already made the decision to move it, that, that this isn't holding up the West Main Street improvement.
Not twenty feet, not, not for the purpose of the park, which they need to design.
We, we, we agreed last in May, um, not twenty nineteen, May sixth, that we were gonna still move the statue, that, but we were gonna be having a further discussion about what the long-term fate of the statue is. So that, we're not holding up the West Main Street improvement project.
Okay.
But this is, this is to figure out what is the long-term strategy for the representation. So.
I do not want to do another commission.
But I, I, I do like-
I'm with, um-
Mayor Walker's, um, statement, and I, about bringing in the members of the Monakin, as well as the Shoshone, the, the relative Native American tribes, to come and have a, a conversation with us about, about representation of their peoples, and, um,
But this is still saying that the statue is going to be on Main Street, just twenty feet.
Right, that would be the decision, if we call the question, we have-
Yeah, no.
Well, but there might just be, if we, we do need to- Well, but there might just be, if we, we do need to.
Well, right now, all we're looking at is are we going to, all we're being asked right now is are we going to get, have, give staff the direction to take this approach that's been laid out? And I'm not in support of the approach that's been laid out.
I think we can have a work session in early fall and I think we need to, when would the work start, need to start? We can't have the work session before you all decide whether it's 20 feet or it's moved somewhere else?
Well, the, um, the, the last staff presentation to City Council, council, we are farm staff presentation. So, so that decision is already made by the City Council. Uh, uh, on a related note, you also made a decision directing staff to, to provide a, uh, some kind of recommendation on public-driven process to decide the fate of the statue. So that's what we are discussing right now, but in terms of moving.
The 20 feet.
Yes, that, that decision is already made.
Right. So this is still the long-term fate of the statue and how we make that decision.
That's correct.
Or could, it could move into the next council, but I do think the voices of the Native American peoples need to be brought in, in a much stronger way than what, you know, I know staff is being very careful to have representation from our advisory groups, but I do think it, it needs to be very much weighted towards the Native American voices and, and that, that would be the, that would inform this council and the next council what to do in a long, long-term fashion about the statue.
Okay.
Alex, sorry. Mr. Kefino, was, was there, there was, we've referred a lot to this process from 10 years ago, was there a report from, from that? And we haven't seen it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, my impression was this all was done. There was a very fulsome public engagement process with members of tribes that was pretty thoughtful and that Mayor Norris was the, and that this, this all went, and this was what went into that plaque being there. It's just in a crappy location. But, but I would like to see that report before we.
Yeah, I don't think there is a report.
There's not.
I'm not sure, but I'll ask.
They must have done something.
I would ask Jeff to check our records and see if there is any documentation, you know, related to that plaque.
Could we, could we read Dave's?
Sure, sure.
Okay, this is just the first paragraph, count, just for the benefit of the public counselors. I've never liked the design of Lewis and Clark statue. This is from former mayor Dave Norris. Because without the benefit of context or history, it leaves many viewers with the unfortunate misimpression that Sacagawea is portrayed as cowering. When you spend time researching the history of the expedition and the history of the statue as we did in great depth 10 years ago, and when you speak with Sacagawea's descendants about how they wish for the statue to be perceived, you come away with a much different impression. She is not cowering at all, but rather performing the vitally important role of tracking. Unfortunately, the casual passerby does not have the benefit of that context, which is why moving the statue to a pocket park where people can read the interpretive signage would be quite helpful. Bottom line, it may be a poorly designed statue, but I do not believe it was a malevolently intentioned statue, especially when you consider the fact that the sculptor himself chose to add Sacagawea to the piece to honor her for her role in the exhibition. And then he goes on to bash the Lewis and Clark statue at the corner and say it should be melted down. It's a different topic.
Okay.
Could I offer just one procedural, I know Mr. Warner's in the, the audience and, and the director might want to address this, but I know that at the last council meeting, there were questions about whether this would in fact initiate either a 106 review at the federal level or state environmental impact review. And, and I think we did get some information today about that.
Oh, good. Can you come up?
Essentially, uh, section 106 is, um, it's a federal historic significance, uh, property or structural review process. And whenever there is federal funding in such a project, then it triggers section 106. And if it does, then chances are, uh, the West Main project may never take off of, uh, in the next four or five years. That's a ser, uh, a very rare possibility because, uh, it gets to be reviewed by folks in Washington. And at the same time, uh, our project is one of the project, there are several thousands of projects in the United States that have been funded by the federal government that will be waiting for the same review. You know, so, um, if, uh, if phase one of this project, uh, I don't think, doesn't have any federal funding. Phase two does have a combination of state and federal funding and potentially could, uh, may impact the project. And then phase, phases three and four, we haven't gotten to, to that point yet because, uh, they haven't been fully funded. The first and second phases, uh, we've got the funding for those projects. Phase two is got a, a combination of federal and state funding in it.
Okay.
Did we get some word though? I, I don't know, I got an email very late today about possibly that VDOT would divorce this, this decision from either process.
Yeah, um, if there is a decision right now, the city makes a decision, the city council votes to relocate, to move the statue from where it is right now as opposed to the 20 feet. 20 feet, the state historic preserv, uh, the state historic, uh, resource department, you know, will work with the city. But if the city is proposing to move the statue, council votes now to move the statue away from where it is, then it becomes a, a huge challenge. Uh, we have to go through the state historic review process and if that becomes, um, uh, the issue, then there is a risk, rare possibility that, uh, the Virginia Department of Transportation may tell the city, well, why, why not you guys go figure out what you need to do with the statue and when you are done, you can come back to us. And then they could take their funding and reallocate it to some other project.
Okay.
Do you mind if we, we were to ask Mr. Warner to come up?
I just had a brief conversation with Jeanette Jodicek, who's managing the project. And, um, I mean, I guess I'll say right now, there's a whole lot of unknowns, kind of came into the evening discussing an idea for, you know, community-led discussion on, on the disposition of the statue. So I'm not, um, I mean, sort of like the conversation we had today, I said, I'm not an attorney and offering just a perspective on my experience. First off, state, section 106 is a federal process. There is a state-level equivalent, there is no easy term for it. So you'll hear section 106 a lot discussed, but that is the federal level. The statues on the Virginia Landmarks Register, my understanding is, uh, at this, with state funding, with this, that state designation, that equivalent review would be necessary if something were to, um, for removal of the statue. The relocation of it, we are, indication of DHR is that they'd work with us on it. Jeanette today said, um, she believes that VDOT would, um, consider allowing the city to decouple it from the project. And, um, I just don't know much more than that, except didn't come in here this evening prepared to entirely discuss that. And, um, but as I mentioned to you earlier, there still is a matter of, uh, this is a, it does, you know, the word architectural reviews been involved in this, uh, review, the design review. The correct process would be if a decision were made to remove the statue, it would go to the BAR first. And as I mentioned today, a decision by the BAR, let's say the BAR said, no, we won't grant a certificate of appropriateness for its removal, um, that could be appealed to council. Let's say the BAR approved it, that decision could be appealed to council. Correspondingly, city council's decision can be appealed to the courts. So, so, uh, given what I'm hearing within the community, you sort of see the dominoes lining up for, for, for a possibly protracted, uh, challenge. So I, I, I think that, I think that all has to be sort of reviewed and calibrated within your decision, just so there's, so everybody understands, uh, what's going on here. As I said, the discussion tonight was to come in and I think, and I, I got, I drew the short straw after the meeting we all had and I, I got to draft the resolution and I, I intentionally, um, put what I could in, and I, I had, has been emailing me with some, some wonderful recommendations, um, and suggestions. And, you know, I felt like I had put in here to, that, that, uh, conversation with the, not only the Shoshone tribe, but our local tribes and with other stakeholders. And I also, I felt it was important and put in here too, that, uh, not just the, the, the contributions of Sacagawea or Lewis and Clark, but the entire core discovery, including York. And, uh, if I could just sit here, I'll throw this in, last couple of months, we've been having discussions with groups about West Main and as you all instructed us to do. And, um, nobody told in those conversations, nobody said remove the statue. The, the, the comment that we got associated with the statue was, well, what can we do more about York? How can we bring him to the fore? And I'll just offer that what Charlene Green said to me is, you know, we, we have an opportunity adding to this discussion, to be adding to history, not removing. And, um, and I, I, I wish I had brought her quote because it was very strong. And I just maybe throw that out there as a, a personal thought, but, um, as far as your question, I wish Jeanette were here and we could really bring, but I, it sounded like VDOT would contemplate decoupling it.
Decoupling, and that's important.
And then it would require city funds and city action.
Right. That is important, that VDOT is taking a look at possibly saying, if the city council looks at this and you want to make this statue decision, that VDOT may say, and again, we don't have complete confirmation, but they may say, okay, city, do it with your own dollars, your own process, but it will not be subject to the state process. Now, I think we don't have confirmation, but that is something that they're now con, that VDOT has talked to our staff about.
So here we are, in interest of time, I mean, what's in front of us is.
So I think if you all don't mind, Mr. Lopez was mouthing something and as the only member in the room, I would like to, since he's here from Fairfax, give him the opportunity to say whatever he's trying to say from back there.
I was, hi, I was here 10 years ago and I, just as I am now today in front of you, I came before the city council and I worked with Jennifer Hoyt-Tidwell and other community members and we lobbied the council to, and the Historic Resources Committee to, uh, to, well, first we wanted the removal of the statue, but it was so far out of, you know, possibility, it just seemed impossible at that point. But, um, a discussion happened and then we reluctantly agreed to having a plaque. So then I lobbied the Historic Resources Committee very hard to include the language that the family provided, including Ms. Abramson and Rosina George. And that was a battle. And then also getting the city to fund the dedication ceremony. That was another battle. But, um, this, we basically dragged the city along, kicking and screaming. They didn't, not everyone wanted to do anything with the statue. The community rose up and said, this is appropriate. And the reason why eventually there was a consensus, I think people agreed, that something needed to be done to mitigate the way the statue portrayed Sacagawea. And so when the West, the, the Shoshone came, they said they were saddened by the image and the portrayal. And that's why they dedicated the plaque. There would be no other reason for them to have to do that if it weren't for the portrayal of Sacagawea's, you know, however historically, you know, intended it was as a forager or as a tracker, um, it still is probably the worst statue of Sacagawea in the country. If you do the research, you won't find another one as demeaning. And that doesn't mean to say that foraging for food and is a demeaning thing. It doesn't mean that. It just means that in that kind of, you know, portrayal, it's usually, um, you know, the people are portrayed in the, in a way that Lewis and Clark were portrayed, you know, standing, proud, you know, being aware and, uh, having some kind of, like her actual role was actually, she was a translator. She had much more executive kind of role than just a food gatherer. But I don't mean to knock the food gathering, you know? I think what, what I'm, um, saying in the work that I've been doing here lobbying the city is that, um, the conversation needs to happen with the native people. If we care about foraging for food, native food, then let's have a program that supports native plants and that, that knowledge, if that's the kind of thing we, we want in the city. Let's work with indigenous knowledge and the people that have it and, um, let's build a program. And I think the, in my thinking, the, the statue, if it were moved to the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center, which is closer to the birthplace of one of the, of Lewis or Clark, I think one of them, maybe it was, um, there, there's a plaque over there on 20, um, which says that Lewis or Clark was born.
It's Mary Wethel Lewis.
Yeah, it's very close to there. And I think, um, so it might even be very, you know, extremely close to the side of the Darden Toe Park. There's the replica of the boat, there's the, the facility there for teaching. I think there's a lot of potential for educational programs and exchanges, and I think it's just a better sight for actually doing something with that representation. Now, um, uh, I don't know if you have any other questions about what happened 10 years ago, but, um, for it to be portrayed as something that, you know, unified everyone, it, it was, um, even in the news reports from the time and, um, the presentations that were made, they acknowledged that the image was saddening to them. And they did their best to kind of doctor the whole thing, you know, to kind of heal what, what they could, you know, in, in the manner that they, they knew how. And it was a good thing, you know, it was a good thing that brought us all together. But, um, in hindsight, I think we can do a lot more. I think we can, and I think the, Ms. Abramson's point of view, I think your interpretation is, is accurate because, um, she doesn't understand the context here, the, and the potential that we're, we're being given. If it's just going to take the statue away and there's nothing to replace it, then I think she would of course take that position. But I understand that there are other people who have a different view in the tribe. It's not monolithic, there, there's other points of view. You know, think life is a much more complicated. So I think it would be, I, I think the city should work to invite the tribal members, their tribal leadership, historic preservation organizations like the, the one that I read a letter from earlier today and, um, and meet with them and develop a program and, and take steps that are substantive, that teach. Because the city has profited so much from the legacy of Lewis and Clark's journey and it's been a very one-sided, uh, portrayal of the, of history. And I think there's a point in time where we recognize, let's have, you know, this is one, if it is unifying, then let's have a real dialogue in teaching, uh, here. So.
Mayor Walker, thank you. Appreciate it. Mayor Walker, Ms. Grace Hayes, um, a Native American resident of Charlottesville is also here and, um, she was asking if she could have a couple of minutes to say every word. She was supposed to speak earlier, but was having car trouble during a public comment session. So she was wondering if she could speak during this moment. Ms. Hayes.
Thank you. How do you do? How are you? I'm a citizen of Charlottesville and I appreciate you hearing me today. Um, I emailed an image, if you can find it, of a statue that I saw in South Dakota just a few weeks ago. And, uh, I was there with a young relative at the time and it was, I have a picture of her, I'd share, but I, I can't share it through email. It's not really right to do that, but I will, um, let you look at her face when she sees this statue. statue. That's what the face of a Native American child looks like when they see a statue like that. As a Native American mother, I raised three sons in this community and the, at the angle of the statue, when you're in a car seat, you can actually see her face quite well when you pass by. So as my children got old enough to see her face, they would cry and ask me to pull over so that they could see her closer and I did that. They wanted to know why she was scared and why she was sad. And so I got Charles Eastman's book about her life, who's a Native American historian. And I also went to the library and I got the Lewis and Clark journals and in most cases, photocopies of their own words. And I read those and I shared those stories with my kids so that they could have a more full understanding of that story. So I ask that you consider, as citizens, when, when I'm prepared to go to the museum, I'm ready for that. You know, when I go to the Native American Museum in Washington DC or I go to the Monticello Center, I'm prepared for what I'm about to see. I prepare myself, I pray, I smudge. But when I'm driving for the first time in the city of Charlottesville that I've just moved to, I was not prepared for that. Definitely not prepared for the conquest statue or for explaining that to my children. And when I pick up speakers from the airport to speak at the University of Virginia, who are themselves Native Americans, and we have to pass by those, both of those two statues on the way to the university, they ask me if we're safe here. So when you go to a museum, you're prepared to look at various stages of history, but when you're in a city and you portray a statue that's larger than life, you're saying, this is the city of Charlottesville and this is how we feel. So raising children in this community with a lot of historical content is not as easy as you might think. They asked me a lot of difficult questions and I'm still trying to answer those questions myself. I don't know if you found that email to the city council. But I, I would very much love to see some statues. There have been Native American artists who've come to Charlottesville who said they would themselves donate their artwork, donate the, the labor of that. My middle son Holden, who had a lot of questions about that statue, has looked at all of them and has, at this point, from the influences of growing up in a community with a lot of art, he has become a sculpture artist and a historian and a paleontologist and, you know, you name it. He wants to understand the history and the truth. And he would donate his hands to create a sculpture that would tell a healthier truth of reconciliation and where we are as a people and how we want to represent ourselves as a people. So we can talk about history, you know, but as a person walking through the city feeling that history, I would rather have time to be prepared than, you know, to have to walk past it and feel that, because it doesn't feel the same to me. I don't wonder whether she's tracking. I remember how that started, that story. Sacagawea was not a woman who fell in love with an older man and got married. She was trafficked. She was a murdered and missing woman. You know, we have tens of thousands of women, Native American women who are missing right now. We don't know where they are. Some of the bodies have been found, but we are not being paid attention to. When I look at her face, and I know that that woman did not fall in love, but instead was kidnapped by a French trapper and then did this work, is not the same story. And when I look at her face, I can't really forget that story. So I think that communicating with the family members and with Native American community is very important in moving forward as a community and as a nation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
So have we been clear for staff or do, I don't feel like we have. Do you?
So we're looking for opportunity to set up an engagement with this very targeted group of folks within a certain timeframe.
So, let me, just for clarification, council wants a meeting with Native Americans, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we need to authorize, because if we're asking people to come here, we need to take care of them while they're here and help them get here. So it shouldn't be 75,000, but.
That should be less than that, if that is the only.
But we are authorizing an amount that's needed for this.
Do we have all the, do we have enough information to estimate?
Well, that would be a function of how many people.
But wouldn't we want it to, I mean, I guess you're right, because the woman who emailed us, I think she's Idaho or Far.
I don't have an idea of how many people they would want to have coming here, how many people would already be local. I think we'd have to get some information to determine what we, what amount we're actually allocating for that new scope.
I would, could I suggest that the city, we haven't, some, a process did happen 10 years ago, that, that they, presumably they intended to do pretty, it may have had shortcomings, but looking at what they did 10 years ago critically and then seeing whatever the shortcomings were and advising us on, on ways forward from whatever happened then and allowing us to see that report, I think, or whatever, whatever came out of it. If it was a city commission, they had to have done, they had to have taken minutes at the meetings, they had to have, I would have thought they would have had a memo from it.
It wasn't a commission, it was, it was contact, Historic Resources Committee was contacted, as I understand. I, there's actually a binder in my office, but I'm welcome to come and see. But the Historic Resources Committee and some other individuals in town who were concerned about, I, I can't remember the woman's name.
Jim, Jim, I want to play tip.
That's it. And so they worked on reaching out to members of the tribe, bringing them in, so that it was not the result of a commission. And the outcome of that was the plaque that was placed and the weekend event.
Okay.
Well, there's certainly that information in terms of those contacts are known and they have been engaged with by the city in the past, and so it's a starting point from which to build.
And the, the staff memo does identify that outreach to stakeholders would include the Lewis and Clark Exploratory Center, the Virginia Indian Heritage Program, and the Leibin Shoshone Tribe. I'm not sure if the, the heritage program would include the Monocan Indian Tribe as well, but I do think that there is a, at least a, a framework there that we can draw upon and the question is, you know, how many people that would make a good, good opportunity for a work session and that we would get the perspectives that we're seeking. That number is not known to me and I don't know if the, the past report is going to give us that number because it was a different, a different process.
But we can just agree that we are dedicating, we are asking staff to do this and that the funds that they deem necessary to return to, for this to set up, which shouldn't be anywhere near the $75,000.
Seventy-five thousand dollars, right.
But I don't, Mayor Walker, I don't know what we're talking about. I mean, if we're talking about, about having, like at Monticello when they did meetings of all the Hemmings descendants, there were, there were, I think, over, you know, dozen, over 100 folks. I mean, if we're talking about 100 people, you know, round trip flight, hotel stays, it could be, it could be $100,000, it could be $75,000, it could be, it could be a significant amount of money for community engagement where we're not even sure what we're, if we're looking to build a new statue. I mean, it's, the card is sort of, I'm not sure what to do. I mean, it's.
Well, I just think that they can just give us updates and let us know.
I was gonna say, you do have a $75,000 marker in here right now. And to the mayor's point, this may not even be 75,000, but the council could say that instead of the 75,000, resolving instead of the 75,000 to hire a consultant, they could ask that the city manager, along with the director of Neighborhood Development Services and his staff, use that money to set up a work session, using those funds for the council to hear from representatives, that the city manager and the director of NDS, probably talk to the Historic Resources Commission as well, to bring you the representative bodies and representative folks. Might, might I suggest that there's virtual means of doing this where we could, where we could use, there are Google Hangouts.
So I think Dr. Richardson is trying to say.
Where we could save, where we could engage a lot of people visually and you don't necessarily have to fly them in and you could get their voices and faces and hear them. And there just might be ways of, this, this idea of having.
But I think my, my issue with that would be is that the people who, voices dominate the conversation here, that we need to see and have people and know that they, and show that they're truly valued. If we're just going to do some kind of online form or survey and then go back to listening to the people who send us the most emails about their interpretation, I, I don't think that that would have the same effect, but.
You got earmarked, $75,000 for this. What we'll do, we'll go back and do our due diligence in terms of looking at overall expenditures for trying to produce what the council is asking in terms of bringing people here or having those discussions with local folks. And once we're done with that, we'll be able to provide you with a better accountant. I don't think that we're going to spend $75,000 on this entire project, but, you know, if you earmark it, we'll come back to you with our proposed expenditures.
And if I may suggest too, that in the resolution as written, it does provide a kind of a framework of questioning that could guide the structure of the work session, such as, you know, what, because the, the topic is the disposition of the, of the Lewis, Clark and Sacagawea statue, included but not limited to removing it, retaining it here and or elsewhere in the city, creating opportunities to more fully express the historical context, identifying additional opportunities for the city to more fully express the community's Native American history, which speaks, speaks directly to what Mr. Lopez was talking about in terms of creating the programming that we need to fully educate our community and our, and future generations about this relationship with the Native American peoples here. So I think, I think that what the staff has written is actually, has not been for nothing at all. I mean, it, it really gives us a framework of what we want to explore, but this time instead of the 11-member committee doing work sessions, we want to have that, a group of representative people coming to speak with us to have, and I would think that we have within staffs means the ability to facilitate that conversation so that we can devote this money to getting, to getting our guests to come here. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So we.
Do you have a, one second, I'm typing up something now I can.
Okay.
Do you mind if I read it? Just. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Charlottesville, that the city manager and the director of Neighborhood Development Services shall contact the appropriate representatives of Native American tribes to attend a city council work session in the early fall of 2019 to discuss the Sacagawea Lewis and Clark statue. The, the cost of the work session and attendance shall not exceed $75,000.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that?
Sounds good to me.
Yes. All right. So, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, please vote. All right. That carries five to zero. All right. Thank you. Next, we have the revising the agency budget review team and setting funding priorities first of one reading.
Good evening.
I am here before you with revised, sort of, what was described as the alternative scenario on May 20th, when I was here before to talk about the agency budget review team process. As you'll recall, we've had recommendations from a work group from last year. We had those recommendations come before council in January, which yielded a work session, which yielded a, a follow-up to, with a specific recommendations to postpone the process for another year to make the more substantive changes. Council requested an alternative scenario that did not postpone the process for one year and that was presented at the 11th hour at the last time we were here on May 20th and then was incorporated more formally into this council memo for today to allow for additional comment, both from city councillors but also from community members. The resolution attached would form a benchmarks and metrics committee that's, or benchmark and solutions group that would identify both the metrics by which the ABRT should be measured, either successful or not, but also, and more specifically, the solutions that community members would like to see provided by nonprofits in this community. It also includes recommendations to adopt the priorities of the UVA Working Group, which were jobs and wages, affordable housing, public health care, education. That also creates a modified process for recommendation, I mean, for proposals under $25,000, which would be permitted for any nonprofit that could demonstrate that they would meet a city council broad strategic goal. Recommendations, proposals for more than $25,000 would need to fall into one of these four priority areas. There was some concern expressed by sort of what those breakdowns in terms of amounts have historically been and so better to better understand the impact on existing nonprofits. But the vast majority of nonprofits receive less than 10% of their overall budget from the agency budget review team process, with the notable exception of Georgia's Healing House Home Visiting Collaborative on our own, FAR and Sin Barreras, each of which receives close to, close to 20% of their overall budget. Four out of five of these applications would easily fall into one of the priority areas in terms of their requests, presuming, assuming that their proposals would be for similar programmatic requirements or proposals that they've had in the past. Of the amounts, which is different from percentages, there are five community agencies that receive grants that are more than $25,000 historically, that do not fall easily into one of the priority areas. And they include Foothills Child Advocacy Center, Shelter for Help in Emergency, both programs, both residential services and community outreach, Legal Aid Justice Centers, Child Advocacy Program. Offender Aid and Restoration has three out of five of their programs that fall amounts of more than $25,000 that don't fall readily into one of the four priority areas. And then the Pathways Program, which is an emergency assistance fund, actually the city has requested that the Haven actually administer on behalf of the city. And so that would be fairly easy for us to carve out since that didn't start as a competitive grant anyway. But the other four agencies would have an impact in terms of reducing their amounts, given, if we adopted this as written. So it's important for council to know what the potential impact for nonprofits will be and whether that's something that, sort of moving towards this more prioritized process, that's something that's, you're all comfortable with and to what extent and when. So we're here with the alternative scenario because council requested a way to move forward with some of these ABRT changes. with some of these ABRT changes without deferring the process an additional year. So there may be some middle path around some sort of step-down process. It's hard for me to understand how we would be able to do, to make all these changes and do a step-down process, and so, staff could use some direction from you all about how to move forward on that. Some additional changes or things to point out about the memo include arts and culture concerns. There's an added sentence in the recommendations for staff, let's see, under defer, decision to set aside funds for arts and culture. We had talked about waiting until the CACBB leadership was in place, and then that there were additional arts-specific representatives, representatives on the CACBB board, that there are several folks who have reached out to me personally and some to the, to the council requesting that perhaps council could support some paid outside facilitation of arts and culture organizations to try to better understand how the process could be improved specific to them moving forward. It is a sort of very consistent piece of feedback we've received, is that the ABRT process does not serve arts and culture organizations particularly well or fluidly. And so it is, I think, a worthy effort to spend some time getting to know how the, the council could continue to support arts and culture organizations. There is fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget, in the fiscal year nineteen budget, that was for arts and culture coordination that has been untapped. It did not carry forward into the adopted fiscal year twenty budget, so we would need to take advantage of that, or council could direct us to try to carry that, that money over into the next year if you wanted to use that for an externally facilitated process around arts and culture.
Could you remind me with a number in that, our current allocation is for arts and culture during these frozen years?
It has been a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
That includes festival funding, which is usually...
I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun, asking questions. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
I think questions are welcome anytime. But we also suggest there have been some recommendations and suggestions from the public also about the membership of the Benchmarks and Solutions Group. I was pretty general in my set of recommendations. I included some specifics for people who had experience in data collection and data analysis, somebody who could sort of help guide this, particularly the conversation around benchmarks and metrics. It's been recommended that we include either community members, specify that the community members who are included are the at-large community members that are identified as community members, I mean, as members of this work group, be specifically low-wealth clients of nonprofits, as a very specific way to reach out to those folks whose voices have not been heard in the past in terms of this process. I support that. A couple of folks have identified, then interest in having the city council member of this boards be specified as ex officio, given the power dynamics with folks in the room. And other folks have also requested that there be specific nonprofit representations, representatives on the Benchmark and Solutions Group. So that's the feedback I've received, some of which has come forward to council as well, some of which has not.
Specifically to that, that group would be very separate from, we'd still be going back to a similar model when it's actually coming time for those applications to come in. That group would just be relying on the output of the measurements group, but we would still be going through a similar vetting process, partly staff, other members of the community, like we have done in the traditional sense.
Yes, and we have three, three years...
So there's a separate, I'm not comfortable with a counselor being the one actually allocating, but the measurements is one thing, but like, I wanna make sure we're differentiating those two groups for the public.
Yes, two different groups. And I don't, we can't call it the Agency Budget Review Team anymore, 'cause we're trying to call this something else, but it would be the review team members, and we have very specific process recommendations that we've received in our surveys that we've done before the work group, recommendations around process from the work group and others to help steer this sort of things that, including, and most, probably most relevantly, the training around ethics, around conflict resolution, I mean, conflicts of interest, and around the sort of power dynamic in grant-making and funding decisions. Also, the idea that we would do site visits for every single one of the applicants, I think that that has historically been an issue of some concern about whether you got one, whether you didn't get one, whether it was to your advantage or not, and so being consistent across that. So yes, there would be a separate review team that would not include council members and would be a mixture of nonprofit clients, nonprofit representatives, or people with experience in nonprofits, people in city government or municipal government if we included county.
And then, I'm, sorry, for this next fiscal year for arts and culture, then how are we handling that?
It's a good question.
Because we're reading for the CACB, but like, we're getting ready to...
So do we freeze the arts and culture ones separately as we're working out a new process? I think that's a question for you all.
And I also think that we're back to the original two, just of points that I wanna make. One, you can't fund everything, and everyone thinks that they're doing amazing work, and maybe they are, I'm not there, but that's one part. It's about us deciding what, what work we want done and at what magnitude, right? So you can spread yourself thin and do a lot of little things, or you can make a huge investment and attempt to do it right, with some of the accountability measures in place and things, you know, like that. Also, I think that, you know, that, I know I've been very clear, and it has made the nonprofit community some of them, 'cause there are a lot of people who have said there, we are not doing, certain people are doing great, but a lot of people are not. So those, of course, those individuals are not gonna come forward because they work at these organizations, but again, as the, I think, only council member who's ever worked, have you all worked at the nonprofit?
I've chaired one, I mean...
Worked at nonprofits in town and provided direct services, you know what goes on within... And, and so, I again want us to make sure that we, that this is about people, clients, citizens, having the resources they need and the ability to get better, and less about whether nonprofits feel comfortable with the changes that are being made.
And that's where, one of my points, my litany of feedback here, was that my concern is if we're just focusing on these priorities, A, I worry that, like, affordable housing, we are addressing that with a whole different funding stream with our CAF, and I think this council has given a commitment that we wanna have a direct funding stream. So my question is, in the future, how does that work? Do we fold those CAF funds in with all of this so that we have a streamlined approach? Or do we keep it separate, in which case then, maybe, you know, the affordable housing, I mean, there's other avenues that could be applied for through this, but I just wanna make sure that we're not muddying, you know, the waters, and that we are also being consistent because there are largely nonprofits that are asking for, for those dollars. And then I also am concerned that we're not really recognizing that council has put a lot of time and energy into both reentry and mental health as a priority, and that's not here. And so, to me, it's like, well, that's what we spent some considerable time on, and, I mean, you've named some of those organizations impacted, so I'm just struggling with, with where that, that gap, because I do believe those are important to the community, and I realize not everyone can have everything, but when I think about the areas that we've spent our time on as a council, those are certainly areas that we have, we have prioritized.
And we talked about that, as, you know, and I agree that, I mean, pretty much, if the work is being done right, we have created a community where we have a high level of need to have these services operating. But I think we are, for me, what is most important is change it, whatever we can agree on that that looks like, but also make it client-centered and focused, and every decision that is put into it is about individuals being served, and hopefully that nonprofits are working at, to work themselves out of needing this funding, so that means that we create a healthier community. And I sent you a proposal, I've talked to Dr. Richardson about it, but I also think that, you know, we need to invest more money into these direct fundings of these emergency-type situations, which is, I think we need to hopefully include that, where families are getting this money directly. If you remember the Orange Dot report, they talk about these crises within families, that then families spiral out of control as a result of that, and so, you know, seeing if that becomes a significant portion, if we invest a significant portion of that funding into that kind of, do we eliminate some of these other areas of need over time, because people's lives are now spiraling out of control and they have some, you know, stability. Now, I didn't finish getting the feedbacks, I don't know where we are with that, and I didn't send it out, 'cause I was waiting to see with staff, but...
So Mayor Walker, and Ms. Dunic, is there any reason why we couldn't tune more priorities to the four and add reentry in mental health?
Absolutely not. I would suggest that mental health can be easily incorporated into healthcare, which is a, which is a priority area.
That's true.
Given the really focused effort to have parity for both mental health as a healthcare issue. So I think that, that's sort of already taken care of. I do think the criminal justice, sort of, victimization sort of piece is missing in terms of your priority area, if you were trying to identify some other areas, some other sort of priority area that might cover some of those folks who are, who are not identified, particularly, I think that would get to Foothills, Shelter for Help and Emergency, Legal Aid, and all the offender aid things as well. That doesn't mean that there's an automatic in for all of those folks, it just allows for, for them to make an application for more than twenty-five thousand dollars and then be considered on the merits of that application, and this year, they would be permitted, because we don't have time to sort of ramp up the, the measures and solutions group in the short term, that this year they'd be allowed to tell us how they're gonna meet that, that broad goal priority area, and then in future years, we would be more specific based on the work of the Benchmark and Solutions Group to be able to say, these are the kinds of outcomes we're looking for, how can you get us there?
And what are your thoughts around the conversations that we had about how to curb some of these crises that families have, and...
I think last year, the folks who do the pathways and the Charlottesville helpline, sort of, I looked at their year, and so it's a loose collaboration among the organizations in town who address emergency needs, and they really felt like they had, I think, combined about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that they could dispense for short-term emergency needs for folks, and they would open that once a month. They'd run out of money within the first week, and so they know that they're just scratching the surface in terms of what folks have in terms of emergency needs, and a lot of the existing sources to serve folks who have an emergency car repair need to get to work, or those kinds of things, will only allow you to come once, and so, our experience and understanding of people who are living in poverty, or what poverty means in this community with such high housing costs or high, cost of living across the board, and with low wages, is that you're likely actually to be in need every month, not just once a year. And so, we know that there's some pretty profound need for short-term emergency solutions without going to one of the predatory lenders in town, which I think we all wanna avoid. So I don't know that that should be rolled into ABRT, I think perhaps that should be considered outside of this process, and maybe we move the path...
Just as a standing program that we have.
Exactly, and that we move the sort of pathways fund out of the ABRT process, knowing that it was there, sort of artificially anyway, and consider the issue around emergency needs sort of as a separate issue.
As its own budget line item that we just fund as, every year?
Right, or in some way, sure.
So I, and that's, that's fine. I do think, what I was thinking with this, I contacted Yolanda at New Hill to see if this was something that we could marry with their credit repair budgeting, and had a discussion about whether, you know, individuals who have this monthly or so need, if, you know, having them go through that program would be best.
So link it up to...
I think linking it to something, but...
So that is, we start, we start trying to end the cycle of the crime?
Well, that is what you all funded, when you all funded their...
Right, just making sure they're plugged into, if we establish this particular line item in the budget, where we're funding people directly who are having acute need.
Yeah.
That we would make sure that we have a policy that then directly funnels them to New Hill to begin to start ending the chronic nature, and acute nature of the, of the crisis.
And the reason I thought that this was a significant, like, that it could fit in this program, I mean, with ABRT, is because when you're thinking about what starts families down the path where they need, a lot of times, these services, especially when you're talking about poverty, right, and all the ills that poverty produces, this is why they end up needing to go and spend a significant amount of time at places like, you know, let's say a Region Ten, or why substance abuse may become a factor, you know, in the first place at, I mean, there's substance abuse across the board. But I think we, at every income level, but you know in low-income areas, that there can be this, that what, you know, basically, the social situation of the area that individuals live in can play a big part on that. So that's why I started having these conversations around putting it as a, as a part of ABRT, and not just in expanding what the Orange Dot report said to include, you know, one of the significant things, we're talking about increasing the base wage, living wage, people no longer, you know, qualify for services like childcare assistance, and SNAP benefits. So I would see a program like this as giving them an opportunity. If you get a job and your income increases, your benefits would stop long before, you know, before you even get your first check most of the time, and it's one of those questions people contemplate within, with the change, whether it's beneficial for this. So having a program where we pay maybe one to three months of, you know, childcare expenses to allow the change.
So the question is, would this be a nonprofit doing this for us, or would this be a city program doing it?
So I think the conversation that I've had with both of you feeling like it should be city, right? Am I...
Which means that that wouldn't be in the ABRT process.
Right, it could be a city standalone sort of program, and I would assume that the city would want to do this in collaboration with the other providers. Not everybody's gonna wanna come to the city for these kind of services, and not everybody's gonna wanna go to the other places we provide, as many sort of open doors, sort of one process, but one, many doors to get to it as we possibly can. And I will say that even if, if the city hadn't already done some of this legwork around the helpline and that collaborative, sort of nascent collaboration that exists there, that, that this emergency funding and potential link to some problem-solving pools of funding doesn't really quite fit into the four priority areas as identified here. So I think maybe that's, it does better as a sort of separate sort of equity solution or emergency fund solution that's independent of the ABRT process, or we amend the recommendations, the recommended priority areas to have it fit. And so, I think this is where the sort of trick gets, right? If the four sounded right, and they sounded good before in terms of thinking about paralleling UVA Working Group process, taking advantage of the opportunity to collaborate and share sort of emphasis with them. I know the county is very interested in this process too, and it's, it's sort of ringing true for them as well, but that, but then you identify some of these areas where there are legitimate needs in the community that don't quite fit here. So are we prepared to say we're gonna restrict to these four, or do we want to identify sort of broader areas that we say, we're also concerned about criminal justice, or also concerned about sort of community well-being, or community mental health? I think that's the question at hand.
And what are your thoughts around the affordable housing piece, given that we have the Affordable Housing Fund that has a different route that it goes through, which I think could have, has its own opportunity areas, if I'm being really honest?
Well, and I think the hack has worked really hard in the last couple of years to try to identify ways to influence the way the Affordable Housing Fund gets distributed... to try to identify ways to influence the way the Affordable Housing Fund gets distributed. Um, but I also, um, you know, I, I, we're a small enough city that it, those things can at least be working in parallel together. I think that we've had a year in which, um, an application was submitted to the A B R T process and was identified as a high-scoring application, but also the same application submitted to the C D B G process, which is not so very different and identified as a low-scoring application. So it does beg the question about whether coordination among those funding streams internally would be a good idea. Maybe they, it would be a bad idea, but I think it's worth some conversation about it. And I think that it's sort of Herculean to try to figure out how to do that in the short term, but worth some conversation going forward about streamlining.
Current year, kind of be those streams on their own. I just think there's a lot of efficiencies and benefits just to having a consistent process for both C B D G, like all, yeah, the CAF, all of this.
And that speaks volumes to just, you know, who's at the table with these processes. And we just need to, um, I know people feel beat up or whatever, beat down or I'm negative about it, but I don't know how you get to a point of where people-centered, client-focused, citizen-focused without keep seeing it. Um, and we've been funding a lot of things and that's one thing I cannot, I, I need to remember. But, um, Ms. Price, so Wes, don't let me forget. But, um, you know, we've been funding a lot of things for a lot of years and this is not just about keeping people employed or having a few successes. I mean, if we create a system, you know, where people are really taken care of, um, then hopefully people can, you know, get out of these cycles that, um, by creating a healthier community. And that's what this is about. My one point before I forget is what you said about having kind of this network. I just don't want us to get lost and bogged down in administrative costs that having, you know, multiple agencies involved in something like that could produce.
I agree, and I think they're trying to limit that too in their early collaboration was trying to say, is it possible that we could, could create one pathway to access all the services in town? That doesn't mean that we stop that or, or grab all of those services internally to one location, but that we make sure that when you walk in, in the door, you get good information about where to go next to a resource that can help solve your problem. And so before, you might walk through five doors and be told at each door to go back to one of the previous doors, right? Because we just didn't have that collaboration and communication. So I think there's an opportunity. And I don't think there's a nonprofit in town who doesn't want to do the right thing for the community, truly. And so we, you know, if that, the vast majority of our grants have been less than $25,000. We haven't exactly been over-capitalizing nonprofits to do the kind of work that we'd like to see done. And so this is an opportunity for us to shift that and to say, we want to give, as we have talked about, both liking and sometimes not liking, move-the-needle money, right? To say, we really do want to see an outcome, not a piece of a metric that might lead to an outcome. But we want to see a profound outcome for the community. There's an opportunity for us to, to look at the, the impact differently after we've done some of that. But to do that means we're saying we're going to fund a few things with a lot more money and not everything with a little bit of money. And that's where the pinch is.
Mayor Walker, may I say something? I don't want to lose sight of this, um, what I'm hearing you say is like a navigator. And then also hearings, we need funding for acute situations. And then we also then need to end, help families get into a more stable place so that they're not always in crises. And, and Mayor Walker, you mentioned the Orange Dot study when that first came out in 2012. I believe in 2013, Lauren Purnell gave a presentation before council, which she illustrated with her, her, her class from Dartford-Batten, just the maze, the maze of services that a, a person in need has to try to figure out how, how to navigate in order to get what has her family needs. And it was mind-boggling. And so the, creating more programs and more nonprofits isn't solving that problem. So I think there is something here about needing this point-of-entry, this navigator who will then work with the families to deal with whatever need, level of need they are on the spectrum, from acute to chronic. But I, and I, that, that seems like it, it would be a city function because it's the only entity that sees it all.
You all appropriated some money two, two meetings ago, I think, actually, to help support the, um, the helpline. And so at the helpline will be answered five hours a day with a paid navigator whose job will be to gather information and then to work through, frankly, a decision-making tree. It's not quite an algorithm, but a decision-making tree that actually Ridge Schuyler set up to help sort of direct us to the right kind of resource. And sometimes that resource is the $300 to fix your car and a referral to the network to get connected to employment opportunities. But I think the sort of New Hill, the sort of value add there is additional dollars to serve to meet the financial emergency needs that, because we haven't put enough in there to do that. But also this next step so that we're not just solving the, the need and then maybe requiring that you go to some kind of financial education class, which is not particularly meaningful, but that we talk more to find out what's the thing? That what's the thing that you do need that might lead to some form of stability? And that stability can be really different, right? If you've been in ongoing crisis for a year, what stability looks like next month is dramatically different from somebody who, you know, is going to get a mortgage, for example. So I think we're really talking about meeting people where they are and asking the right questions so we know what that is. As opposed to just saying, here's the 300 bucks for your car. Um, but really doing this in a partnering way with them to say, you know, now that the crisis has been removed from your life temporarily, how can we help you figure out what the next thing is and steer you to the right direction? There's not enough resources for all of those things, right? There's not enough resources to say yes to everybody in the A B R T process historically. Necessarily, there's not enough to say yes to everybody who has a need. And so it's really for the council to decide this is where we're going to sort of focus our efforts. And the sort of, the priority areas plus maybe this sort of separate, this sort of set aside around financial assistance seems like it helps get somewhere. Um, but this is the sort of time to say, we're, we're prepared to restrict or not in terms of our priority.
First, I want to understand like what we can do with the arts and culture for this one year until we have a more longer-term plan. So can we say we're going to set aside the same amount of money? I don't really like freezing funds, like even for them. I just think it's important to open the door for others who might want to participate, so...
So not freeze the individual grant amounts, but freeze the total for arts and culture?
I'm just throwing out an idea. Like I'm just, you said it was 175. Isn't there some about this $50,000 that could roll over to help, to be part of that?
Well, if I can, so this, to your question about the C A C V B, I'm on the board of the C A C V B on behalf of this organization. And we did a, this is a very important discussion that, and we're, um, without disclosing anything, we're in the final stage, and Counsel Galvin and I as well, of hiring a new executive director. This is a question that we have talked about in the, in the, in the interviews, which is cultural tourism and linking arts programming with, um, with, with the tourism mission, which is something that we had talked about two years ago when we did this, the, the work session with the county, the full board of, you know, city council, county, county board of supervisors. And it, there was a whole discussion about this, whether arts funding would go under C A C F initially, but then it seemed like the best candidate and a best practice around the country is to link it up. It's not like perfect, but to link it up with tourism. And then there's this arts caucus that formed alongside this, which has 50 different organizations in it. And the idea is that we and the county could cabin the total amount of funds that we currently give to arts, put it towards C A C V B, and they could use, but we would have to have this discussion happening with the new leadership of C A C V B and with this arts caucus that's developed and with the county. So I just wanted to say all that because that's a discussion that's happening with C A C V B right now. And, and it could be that we just charge you with reaching out to the C A C V B about this idea and this arts caucus and, and, I don't know, report back to us. Because it's, it's kind of taking shape right now. There's going to be a strategic plan, there'll be a new E D.
But we still have to hire the E D first and that.
But that will happen within the next, you know, a couple of months.
And one of the things we have heard from a number of arts organizations is that they felt like the arts caucus process, arts caucus process didn't really reflect them or engage them well and that there are a number of folks who started initially who dropped out during the course of that process because they didn't feel like it was actually a representative group. Um, and that they're concerned about connecting to the C A C V B as a permanent sort of home around using purely tourism metrics in terms of the arts and culture. So I, so while it seems like a really good connect the last time, I feel like we've heard from a number of arts organizations that are not as convinced, so...
Because we're all trying to figure out what to do since P C A folded. So the Piedmont Councilorate no longer exists and the city had, had earmarked this amount of money every year, $75,000, setting aside the money that goes through A B R T, which is however many total hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so everybody's trying to figure out what to do in that void. Right now, we have no organized arts.
Which is why I think that there is the potential of having an externally facilitated conversation that might get out of some of the trouble spots that the caucus had.
But this, and just another point about we keep, we're still bringing back in the voices of nonprofits and what they say their needs are and that they want to continue to receive funding and how they want to continue to receive it. And we haven't heard from people who are being served about whether any of this funding has even worked the way that we want it to work. And so I just hope that in the next few years, I would rather give no money to nonprofits. Um, and I am sure that our, um, a lot of citizens would be in the same place they are today with the amount of money that we do give them. And that's what I want to put out there, that that's what I think.
You ought to get a bunch of emails.
I know, but it's okay. Um, and I think the challenge is for, you know, people to challenge themselves to know, you know, to truly assess whether what you're providing is working. I can go down a list of nonprofits that our mission statements sounded good, the work sounded good, that I have emails to prove it. The clients were not doing well, you know? The people we serve is not doing well. So I just think in these discussions that it has to be less about whether we continue funding, whether we give the same amount of money in the past. Maybe we do, I don't know. But I think right now, we're still basing this decision on what nonprofits, um, directors are saying versus what, um, you know, hearing from people who are actually being served.
That's true, this measurements and solution, that this is home next phase. We just can't do it in the next two months. So we're having to kind of have this bridge in order to avoid freezing funds and so...
But we just keep ending up back at this place, that's just what I'm saying.
Mayor Walker, I just have a question. So like, the matter at hand is, is, is to adopt this resolution or to amend it or to not adopt it?
So I support adding the reentry.
Reentry. Are you calling it in victimization? You brought in that a little bit, Kecy.
I think we-
Yeah, I think I said criminal justice and victimization.
And we almost had a new name and then I was looking at researching and it was a place out in Canada that was doing some of this work and, um...
It's in this memo, the vibrant community memo.
You still think we can do that?
Sure, I mean, the, the state is doing a vibrant communities initiative. I don't think anyone's going to get particularly confused with this. It's just that it had been taken locally before we got to it.
I was still trying to think of coming up with something else.
There's still time to change.
So looking at this resolution, I think that most of it, there's still a lot of flexibility we can have with some of these tweaks, but we should, I do feel like we should be adding to this priority area. And I still have the question about how we're going to handle the affordable housing piece, given we have a separate funding stream for that.
So for, that's for future sort of long-term conversation is about how we stream that together. It looks like we're talking about freezing arts and culture total for the year, but not necessarily individual grant amounts. Um, while we allocate some funds to do a facilitated outside process that may or may not include and connect to the C A C V B process? Did that happen or not?
So Wes, what is the group that you have, um, are part of?
Nonprofit leaders of color.
Yeah, what are, did they have any proposal or recommendation? Or how this facilitation process?
One meeting again on Wednesday.
Okay.
They're included in the process around having a formal E D on in the process.
And then to the step piece, I, I, I do feel that we, this year is a transition year and I do think it's important that we're not taking anyone from everything to nothing in the course of a year. That's just, that's mine.
If you, if we add the fifth priority area, I think that we capture everybody.
Okay.
But that's not a guaranteed funding for...
No, we're, we're saying that, I mean, this is one of the pieces of feedback we've gotten in the past is that, um, past funding impacted future funding and that, that there's nobody involved in this conversation from the work group, before the work group on, that has said that that's a good idea to keep that. So with that, I think if we have some guidelines around priority areas or on expectations and that nobody goes from everything to zero in this process and we say that this is a competitive sort of starting from scratch, I think it's, it's going to be a bumpy ride. But I think we can start to try to make some of the, the priority-based changes that you guys are interested in.
And has the city leadership talked about how this is administered within the city? And who is a part of that? And how we make sure that process is nothing like the old process?
Yes, and so we've also talked about that, like if the county comes on board, how we, how we manage that process together, um, which has historically been the county sort of supporting the city financially to do that. And I think that there's benefit to actually having staff on both sides engaged and actively engaged in the administration process.
And I know we want, because we're just a pinky toe away, you know, all those were closed boundaries, borders or just a mile within or whatever. But we consistently had the conversation about the county not funding as fully as the city funds. So if we're truly talking about partnership and they are not willing to come to the table and fully fund things, I think we need to think about that, where we ended up, end up funding a significant portion of it and they come through with a lot less. Whether that's truly a partnership.
Well, maybe we need to have more, more engagement with our colleagues in the county. And, and have two, two city counselors arrange to meet with two county board members to begin the conversations about getting at the heart of what, what the, what the disagreements are. That's what we did with the courts. That's what we've done, um, with water supply plan. I, I, and that's not then trying to get us all together for a joint work session. But we, we, we need to be kind of moving this along. And I do think, I, I feel very strongly, I would love to be able to say that we're in partnership with the county on this one. Um, and find out what exactly it is that is making them uncomfortable with this process. Because right now, I'm seeing this unfolding as a very good, a good reform. And with a very good process in place that allows flexibility. And they, and they haven't quite seen this yet. Um, but I just, a suggestion to, to get us from, from keeping on track, but bringing them along, but not waiting for a full, and at some point, we'll need a full, in fact, I guess September, we're talking about another work session with the county, right? Which cases could be really fully presented.
And I was hoping it would have happened the last, we just, we weren't there. We had too much in flux. And so I totally will be supportive of being one of those people if there's a need for that. I'm happy.
I think they're talking about their A B R T process this week as well. So I think that we're, and staff have been in ongoing conversation about the changes as we're making them and getting people engaged as well.
You know, if you don't need elected officials involved, that's great.
No, I think it's probably the next stage is to do both. But staff have been in conversation ongoing, so we're priming the pump.
Yeah, for a motion.
About what?
About the resolutions.
So we're adapting this resolution, but we are making a couple of adjustments. So some of it, some of it's even out of the scope of the resolution. We've given you direction on the arts.
Right, no, exactly. So I mean, I, I have written a, a sort of a process, the alternative scenario process is embedded. The resolution is, uh, needs to be adopted to establish the group. And the conversation is what empowers us to do the changes, the process changes that are embedded in the alternative scenario that's in the staff recommendations with some specific decision-making that we've talked about. Come really close to talking about arts and culture in a way that's clear for me to move forward. Um, and then the, certainly it's clear-
Priority areas.
Right, we need to adopt a fifth one if that's what you all would like. And then to remind me what the name is supposed to be.
So, I mean...
I liked the broadness of-
The criminal justice and victimization. It could also be community safety.
Yeah, I don't like victimization.
Would you like community safety better?
Why can't we just say reentry?
Because I think it's broader than that.
It may be victims of domestic abuse.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Community safety.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Or criminal justice, but that's.
Community safety and criminal justice.
Oh, okay.
You know, slash.
Okay, got it. I put a plus.
Because they recommend.
So I move that we adopt the resolution where Council City Council seeks to partner with nonprofits to provide services to improve the quality of life of community members with the following amendment, that the community safety and criminal justice be added as one of the designated priority areas.
And every other thing we talked about is kind of outside of the resolution, but I think it's just.
And did that capture it?
For the resolution content, because other things are just more procedural, I think.
Right.
Okay.
And of those things, I'm hearing nobody goes from 100% to zero. And I'm hearing, and with this change, I don't think that that's a risk. I'm also hearing that we're starting from scratch.
Yeah, but I don't agree with that. That I think that was.
Do you think it's possible that somebody could go from?
I thought that was originally what we said about not funding everyone. So if you're saying that everyone who applies or who has applied in the past will get something.
I think this is the interim, this is a proposal that I feel comfortable with as the interim step, as opposed to deferring for another year to sort of get all of our ducks in order and to give a big heads up to everybody around this process. That if we want to do something for the coming year, then I think we probably, there's an interim solution for this year that includes not ripping the Band-Aid completely off.
I understand that part, but I won't say the organization name again, but two budget cycles ago, I was really clear that one organization didn't necessarily need the money. They just thought, hey, I can ask for it and it's there. If there are organizations that don't need it and just because of the way the process has been, they have requested it and continue to get it, in this case, it was the first year in that way. But I think that we should, you know, that we should look at that.
It would be really important for council to give staff guidance about how to assess that. I think that that's not something that we're sort of prepared at this point to know about what that is. Is that based on an organization's endowment or based on their budget or?
And if I may just say, I put a motion on the table for this resolution as amended that doesn't even include this discussion. So may we just vote on the resolution and then, and then say that these are kind of parking lot items that need to be further fleshed out or resolved. But I just, right now, this motion's out there and at least we can do some direction. But I mean, that the motion doesn't apply to this.
Include the scope of these things, yeah.
This is almost a regulation that would go to this policy, but this is a policy.
Has a motion in a second.
This, I made a motion as amended?
No, I'll second it, yeah.
Okay.
So any further discussion?
Not on this motion, but I agree that we have some, I don't want to leave Kaki without some closure to some of these things. We're on a timeline now. We have one more council meeting before, you know, they're basically have to start this process.
Can we continue on the conversation to give more direction to staff after adopting this resolution? Or do we need to have that embedded in this conversation about the resolution?
Well, I think at this point, as the mayor has asked, it's time for discussion. And if there would be any further amendments to the resolution before voting on them, the council would make them at this point.
Just in the resolution, we don't get into some of this nitty-gritty. So I'm just like, I don't want to make it more complicated, but I also want to give staff direction.
Well, it's, I kind of feel like we should follow the orderly, I mean, if there's a motion for an amendment that has more detail, then the mayor should make it. And if there's a second amendment, then we would do that. And if there's not, then we would move on. I mean, we've been talking about it for over an hour on this, I think, this agenda item. And maybe it's not right for us to make a decision at that level. And that means that we should make the more general one, but it's, if we're not.
So I think the original intent, so you're saying that it would be difficult for staff to at this point evaluate everyone receiving that request funding and determine whether there's an actual need?
I think if you're talking about an agency, whether an agency needs funding from the city, that's not a determination that count, that staff have been prepared to make about whether an agency has a need, whether they are meeting a community need, they can assert that, they can give us data, they can talk about their past performance, those kinds of things. But whether the agency needs the city money and then distributing city money based on the agency's need rather than sort of the agency's services is not an approach that we have taken historically. And so I don't think we're equipped with the council's, understanding the council's will around that or with tools to do that. Certainly, certainly.
All right.
But not for this go-around, yeah.
What else is on your list? So that we get the arts thing?
The arts thing, the question about whether the council member, so this is related to the resolution, whether the council member should have an ex officio status on the committee or not. That would be something that would be directly affecting the resolution. And then I think that's it.
And again, for the council request, I think a lot of that has been driven by the fact that I have been, I was the one spearheading, that's at least how I feel. No one has said it directly to me, so I'm just basing that off of the comments that have been shared. And so with, in that light, I do have an issue with it. And but again, I guess ultimately, we, it'll come before us during budget that we'll be able to have a say, but I don't think how many other boards, you know, I guess we have boards where council members are active. I just, the intention behind why this request is, is that I'm sure is the intention is a little bit troubling for me.
One of the recommendations actually came from another funder in town. It wasn't related to an individual, but related to their ongoing concerns that throughout our process, we have not paid attention to the power dynamics of being a funder and what that means in terms of people's willingness to speak back to us. So I think that both things may be true.
In which case, so with regards to the membership, it's not clear as listed in the resolution that the council member is ex officio.
Right.
So that would have to be a second amendment.
If that's what you all wanted to do.
And so, I mean, it seems strange that the one counselor would have authority to make decisions about funding, that then the full council has to make a decision about funding. So that's why the ex officio status makes sense to me, that there's someone there to help kind of be the one who monitors the rules and makes sure that everyone's staying in line with the processes envisioned by council, but that that one counselor doesn't have an additional say, an additional vote on what happens.
This is just for measurements and solutions. This is not for actually deciding who gets funding. It's just for establishing the metrics.
And I would say that it's important for a council member, particularly behind the reasons that this has been brought up, this go-around and when it was brought up back in, what year was that? 10, 2010, 2013, whatever, a long time ago.
2013.
2013. That we should be able to have input and vote on it. Don't we vote on? We vote on other boards, right, yes.
It depends on the boards.
Right, it depends on the board. For instance, CACV, both of, both Counsel Galvin and Signer have votes on that board.
Right, there's a lot of them, but.
I mean, I don't get why this would necessarily have, I don't, I support us having a council member and having a vote on this process, but of course.
Well, it helps that it's not, I didn't catch the, that it was the measurement working group.
Okay.
Okay, so that, so that doesn't need an amendment?
Okay.
Okay. So that my motion with, as amended with the fifth priority designation still stands on the floor and it's been seconded.
Mm-hmm, okay. No further discussion?
All right, please vote. All right.
That carries five to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stenak.
I do have a question before you go about the, I'm sorry.
I should have run.
It's an endurance test.
Just about the other helpline that funding, what do you need from us?
I think we need to have an additional conversation and then see if we can combine it with our helpline, what that would look like, and then come back to you all with a, with a, probably an appropriation presentation combo to talk about what that's going to look like.
Okay, thank you.
And bring the data around the need.
Need, okay. Thank you. All right.
Break.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah. So 10 minutes?
Please, but like 10 minutes.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
How many more things do we have?
Just one more.
Two.
Now we've got two things.
Two more. You guys want to do them?
Well, Richardson left.